Okay, I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Gardener zoning Board of Appeals. It's February 18th. We have a pretty heavy agenda, so we're going to try to move along expeditiously as we can. If you have, excuse me, a cell phone, I ask that you turn it off so as not to interrupt the meeting as we go forward. Before we begin the hearing, I'm going to go over several of the ground rules by which this board operates. In Gardener, four members out of five of the zoning Board of Appeals must be present to conduct a legal hearing. Tonight, we have five. Applications will normally be heard in sequence, in which they appear in a public notice. The Board is under no obligation to adhere to the sequence. All hearings shall be open to the public, and no person shall be excluded unless he or she is considered to be a hindrance to the workings of the Board. An applicant may appear. An applicant may appear on his or her own behalf or be represented by agent or attorney. The applicant or his or her representative shall present the case to the Board. Representatives of the city shall be heard, abutters to their property present shall be heard, and those in opposition shall be heard. Members of the Board who are hearing the case may direct appropriate questions during the meeting. The Board must render a decision regarding variance request within 100 days after the application was duly filed in the office of the city clerk. The Board regarding special permits must conduct a public hearing within 65 days after the application was filed in the office of the city clerk. The Board must render its decision regarding special permits within 90 days after the closing of the public hearing. All four members out of five of the Board must vote in favor for the application of special permit until it be approved and granted. The right to appeal the decision of this Board is provided for in Chapter 48 of the Zoning Act. The information is available in the office of the city clerk. No variance, special permit, or any extension, modification, or renewal thereof shall take effect until notification from the city clerk that 20 days have elapsed after the decision has been filed in that office, and no appeals have been filed, and is recorded in the registry of deeds for the county or district. The Board requests that each person identify himself or herself by name and address before addressing the Board. Sitting on tonight's hearings are, to my far right, Lori Widder. Next to Lori is Richard Hanks, myself, Ray LaFon's chair. To my left, Mel Cornet, and to my far left, our newest member, Bob Rice. This meeting will be taped and videotaped. Does anybody object to the taping? For the record, no objections. Okay, the first case before the Board. This case number 20220101, continuation. Jonathan Bombachi, 163, 165, Pine Street, parcel ID, has a 22-6-8. It's an update on a special permit. Attorney Tree, you may begin.
Good evening, Board members. Welcome, Attorney Rice. Nice to see you. I am here representing the applicant, Attorney Christine M. Tree of Fitchburg. With me is Matt...
Hey, how do you do?
The co-owner, Mr.?
We can barely hear you.
Is that better?
That's better.
Okay. Attorney Christine Tree of Fitchburg, representing the permit holder, with me is Matt Pearman Perumian. He is the co-owner, together with Jonathan Bombachi, who has been regularly here before the Board. Mr. Bombachi is unable to attend tonight. We're here with a, and have provided a written update. That update was submitted in January. I am happy to go through it. We have a little presentation, but I do want to cut to the chase here, which is that we've complied with all other conditions, but we are not going to be able to expand the parking area. So I am going to go through this just a little bit. For review, this was an abandoned property that was renovated by special permit of the zoning Board into an eight-unit building. Along with the special permit granting the ability to resume the use as a multifamily, parking was reduced from 16 spaces to 11 spaces. Two of those spaces were buddy parking on the right-hand side to be allocated to one unit. The remaining nine spaces were to be constructed by a parking area in the rear of the property supported by a substantial retaining wall. The property in the back slopes down substantially. Substantially from the... Sorry, I'm trying to adjust this correctly, so I don't bother you, but you can hear me. Slops down substantially and quickly from the back of the property, so a fairly big retaining wall had to be constructed already for that parking area. So there were, in that parking lot, it was constructed short by error of the contractor, by approximately eight feet, I believe. And, but it was not realized until the end of construction. That resulted in only seven spaces fitting in the back instead of nine. The two on the side, of course, will still fit. We were brought back before the Board for a review of compliance with conditions, including but not limited to amendment of that parking area reconstruction, so that it would be in compliance with the plan that was allowed under the special permit. And while we have, and I'm going to review the other conditions we are compliant with, we are not going to be compliant with the plan as allowed under the special permit. So just again reviewing, we had started out looking at a few issues. Number one, making sure all of our inspections and certificates were completed. The final certificate of occupancy cannot issue until the parking is resolved, but the temporary certificate of occupancy has been issued. The building commissioner requested that we have an architectural plan depicting a change in a landing on a stairwell, but has given the date of May 20th for that to be submitted. The certificates of inspection for all units have been issued, and after obtaining an engineered plan for the new retaining wall, a building permit was issued for the new retaining wall. According to the special permit, there were three conditions. The first one is that there must be one parking space dedicated to each apartment, and those parking spaces shall be appropriately delineated. So again, eight units, seven spaces in the back, two allocated to the same unit on the side. We do technically meet that condition, but I acknowledge the construction was not to be allowed planned. The spaces have been delineated, and a letter was sent to the tenants instructing them on parking one space allocated per unit in the back, two on the side. These are the pictures of the delineation that was done in the fall. That was in November. And then this you've seen before, it's the letter to the residents instructing them on how to park. The second condition of the special permit was that the buddy parking be located on the north side of the building, be for one apartment, and be clearly identified. The resolution we landed upon was to make sure that signage was installed. Signage was installed first temporarily in August, and then permanently in October. And that was also the subject of the letter to the tenants that you saw before. This was the temporary sign. And as you see on the left two pictures, that was the installation of the temporary sign. The permanent sign is on the right. It has been installed on the property. I apologize, I just don't have a picture of the installation. And then the third condition was about snow removal. Yes?
No, is there anyone parking there, if we speak, in that buddy parking area? Most of the time, I guess, either. I'm not sure how a car can move it down.
The parking is, on the buddy parking, is scheduled to be paved. We were holding that off so it could be paved as part of one project when the new wall was extended. It's not going to happen, so we're going to need to schedule that in the spring regardless. And again, we do have a property management, Candor Realty, under contract to remove the snow. And that again is a letter that you've seen before, just acknowledging that they have a contract to remove the snow at 163, 165. So this is the issue, the expansion of parking lot. So we had a 2021 plan. A contractor constructed using that plan, but failed to follow it. And as a result, we are short, and short seven spaces. We had a plan drawn for expansion, but as we previously reported to you, the cost has been triple to quadruple, the expectation. But more importantly, we've gone back to the people who did submit bids, and they have substantial safety concerns, both for damage to property and for damage to persons if this additional wall is constructed.
What is the additional concern in terms of safety?
The, and there's two letters on this that were in the packet with the letter. The equipment is going to have to come in from behind. It's going to have to come up that hill from behind and construct it from behind. So the entry from that grade, which, you know, I would describe as this, it's, it would be a challenging hike, let's say, and it's completely unimproved. And so if the equipment needs to approach from that way, and the men need to approach that way, and the existing retaining wall needs to be deconstructed in order to fill in further, have a new wall, and then pave over the top of it. Conditions with the equipment that is needed to do that, because again, it's a tall retaining wall. So we're going to need some major equipment there. That equipment is subject to slide instability, create ground instability in that slope, and that could affect the ground which is supporting the equipment as it goes, as it's sitting there trying to do the work. And as that existing retaining wall is torn out, the stability of the parking lot, which is also, of course, you know, supporting the building, because the whole thing starts here and goes downwards. They were not alleging that there was a stability problem as it is right now, but the act of going in there to tear it down, reconstruct it, and build a new one. They had substantial concerns for their equipment, for the property, and for their employees. I know this Board has previously stated it's not so concerned about the costs. And I understand that there is a very correct line of thought here, that the permit holder should have paid attention, monitored the contractor, made sure they constructed it according to the plan, and that the reason we're here is because they failed to provide sufficient oversight. You understand that. But what we're talking about is a cost which was expected to be $50,000 to $60,000, and the lowest oral bid from someone who has not been willing to submit a written bid was $150,000. And 185 and 196 have been submitted in writing, and believe the others were in ballpark of higher than those. So I think somewhere upwards of $150,000 to $200,000 is the projected cost of creating two parking spaces. I do not generally think as a matter of policy. It is an expenditure that benefits Gardener to that extent. Regardless, I think the safety issue is substantial, and I think it should be of concern. It is certainly of concern to the permit holder to the extent where between the two factors, they are just not willing and feel that they are not able to construct that wall extension.
So if we alter, then eliminate two minutes or more?
So this is...
Are they suggesting they want to vote for?
I've given, I've given three options, and that's, one of them is eliminating units. So this was the plan, just because I know that Attorney Rice wasn't here for the prior hearings. That's what it looked like. I'm sorry, I'll go back. So on the left is the front, and then the land slopes downward. The orange circles number the parking spaces in the back. And then where it says "snow," that's the drop-off for the retaining wall, and you can probably see the topographical lines being very close together, indicating a very severe slope.
On that, on that illustration on the five, we got that purple that says "snow," that's where that retaining wall is supposed to be, in that zone?
Yes. So this is the plan that was supposed to be built, and the parking lot ish, is not as deep, if that makes sense.
But it's supposed to be just seven feet back?
It's supposed to, the parking lot is supposed to be seven feet further from where it ends now.
Correct.
Yes, yes.
So you're saying that's a major obstacle to not take that down, and will be someone built that once on that same incline that you're talking about, that you say is now dangerous?
That the contractors that we have looked for bids from are saying that it's dangerous, and it's different to approach it from that side than the front side, which is how the parking area was originally constructed.
Why do they have to remove the existing wall? They can't safely put another wall in and fill it coming?
That's, I'm not a contractor. I'm forwarding the opinions of the contractors that we reached out to and offered employment on this floor.
That's objectionable.
Yeah. So I had updated the table.
I just want to say that we've had many companies look at this and tried, we've had many, many different contractors look at this, and for some reason you can't build over it. I don't know why, but it's not that simple. I wish it was.
Could you go back to that slide, please?
Yes.
So looking at the contours, it looks like you have more than seven feet before you hit that slope. So again, I don't see why, if the first wall was put there, and it seemed like, again, it looks like you've got a good eight, 10 feet before you hit that slope. I don't, I'm not seeing the connection why that wall can't be taken down and moved back.
There are contour lines at the end there, but if you look, I'm sorry about the sound. If you look at the bottom of the diagram, you can see that those contour lines are our subsidiary area across that entire lot. So let's say that the last line of orange circles is about where the existing parking lot goes to, maybe a little bit further, assuming we have a nine-by-18 parking space at the end there. So you can see that the topographical lines are quite challenging still there, maybe not as challenging as the bottom, but that was also the topography prior to the construction of the wall.
Now, the original wall that you, you didn't put in the correct spot, that's why we're here.
Correct.
But the original design had that thing seven feet back.
Yes.
So, but now it's impossible to go seven feet back?
We're approaching it from the other side. We're approaching it from the other side.
Well, why approach from the other side? Why not approach from the same side that you would have done it from the first time?
Because if you're going to do that, again, the contractors have said that the wall that exists needs to be torn down, so you're putting a big, heavy piece of equipment sitting on a parking lot that has been built up with a retaining wall, and then you're going to take the retaining wall out, you're going to have a problem with the weight of that machinery, never mind just the weight of earth, not being stable. We've submitted two of the contractors' letters on this issue. So please don't take my word for it, because I don't build house.
I see site work all the time, and it doesn't seem like it's that complicated. They, they build bridges alongside the rivers while the rivers are flowing, and you're saying this is an impossible feat.
I'm saying that the reason that we're getting quotes for work at approximately $200,000 for, in the effect of having two additional parking spaces and being a danger to the safety of employees and the equipment and the property, is not a worthwhile proposition. It's not worthwhile to the city. And believe me, the last thing this, this permit holder wants to do is come here and say, "I've tried, but I'm not going to be able to comply." I would love to say we can comply. We can't. So what I have looked at, this is the checklist that we had created. Obviously, we are now in the middle and unable to progress any further. What can we, what can we do about this? And the, these are the three options that I came up with. And they will, all three of them require a modification of the special permit, and I would like to talk to you about what procedure you would like to use for that. The first option would be to accept the existing condition, reducing the required parking to nine spaces, and requiring the permit holders to submit an as-built plan depicting the parking lot as it was actually constructed. The second option is to allow the permit holder to provide the two missing off-street parking spaces to the nearest property it owns at 307 Pine Street, and submit an as-built plan for 163, 165, and then a new parking plan for 307 Pine Street. The third option would be to reduce the number of dwelling units, and I propose that we reduce from eight to seven. Generally, one parking, one dwelling unit requires two parking spaces. We would still be in the compliance with the, at least one parking space per unit if we had seven units. And I have checked with the permit holder. This is something that we've been talking about coming up as a possibility, unfortunately. And there is now a vacant unit. They have not moved to fill it. We can make that reduction right now without throwing anybody out and bring us down to seven. I did have a couple of maps depicting what it would look like if the Board preferred the two parking spaces off-site down the street. So this is Pine Street, and that is the difference between 163, 165, and 307 Pine Street, the two properties. And then using the mapping tool, we have about 1150 square feet, point two-two miles. It's about a little under a quarter of a mile. I understand it is not optimal, not optimal, but it is a street that has a sidewalk all the way up and down. And then this is a satellite image of 307 Pine. It has a garage. It's a two-family, I believe. It has a garage with two parking spaces and then approximately five parking spaces on-site. So there is some excess parking, and there is a willingness to build one more parking space so that you would have four for that dwelling, and then two additional for the other Pine Street property. That's what I have to offer. I am going to, if, unless anybody wants to see anything else, end the slide show. And again, I'm looking for a question from the Board to be answered on. Clearly, all of these would require a modification. How would the Board like me to proceed on that, with an application or as part of the current review proceeding? And then any, any commentary. I know this is not the resolution the Board was looking for, but we've reached the end of what easily we can do, and I don't want to pretend that if we keep looking, there's going to be some magical solution out there. We just have to deal with it and figure out what the, you know, what should be the response. Thank you.
I have two questions. First one, have all the certificates of occupancy been approved and signed off by the building commissioner, or do we still have some outstanding that have issues to be corrected?
The temporary certificate of occupancy for the building as a whole was...
Long have the temporary issued for?
Generally, six months, but the building commissioner is going to correct me if we do. The communication that I understood from the commissioner was that the permit holder had until May 20th to submit an architectural plan on that landing that needed to be corrected. My, was I right in interpreting that statement? Right. Thank you for clarifying. I appreciate it.
I think we've got some issues here that still have to be corrected. And there's a timeline that sort of governs when this is going to happen or should happen. My second question. You have one apartment that's vacant. Would the applicant be willing to give up another apartment? So we have two of those that apply that on the free parking.
No, at this time, we were gonna, we would not give up two units, especially since right now there's always vacant parking spots out. What was that? I can't hear you.
And I think it should be talked about amongst the principals in terms of what we're looking at. It follows here, you know, significant money and start, you know, how way, if you terminate one more apartment, what's the impact financially? Is it cheaper to go that way? Look at some of the additional parking items. And so that's why I'm saying you don't need to answer that right now. You can talk it over with Mr. Lombardi or the other principals, but I'm just throwing it on the floor. That you're down one. What would the impact be if you went down to two? And what would its negatives or benefits be for the company? Plus, you've got the issues of the permits here. And so, I mean, there's a lot on the table. And so I would assume Attorney Tree, that next month, you'll have an update on these items, the potential on that parking lot. So I just think we need to close the gap on a few of these things. You know, if it keeps extending out, you know, these things will expire, then there's going to be some other issues as we go forward. And, you know, with that being, we want to shut down a project. We think the project is very worthwhile and provides, you know, residences for individuals. But we've got to make sure it's comprised as best it can, it's safe, and then go forward. I'm going to ask the board, if you have any additional questions at this time. Okay?
Do you have time to review the letter from Tree for the options?
So I, I reviewed it briefly. I think you have, it's my opinion that none of them are ideal. Should the board, the board vote to allow apartments to be removed or not rented, there need to be steps taken to ensure that they're not going to be rented. Meaning you have to remove in its entirety back to the source, one of the components that makes one of those dwelling units a dwelling. I mean, you remove the kitchen back to the source and that's back to basement source. So it can't be easily, you know, replaced once, once we move past.
Let's do that.
The eternal comment that I have, and I understanding both sides of the coin, it's difficult to enforce when there's existing framework in there to violate. At the same time, there is nothing prohibited as any dwelling unit having more than one bathroom or more than one kitchen. Although we all know that a dual kitchen is the most likely inappropriate use as two dwellings.
So I, I would, my rebuttal to that would be, none of these dwelling units are connected, right? They all have individual egresses directly to outdoor. So none of them share a common corridor. They all ingress and egress through a porch. So nobody's sharing two apartments, right? So you have an individual standalone dwelling unit. And in order, if you're not going to rent it and you're going to, you're going to remove it, the building department is going to require that one of the components be removed.
And if another opportunity presents itself to provide appropriate parking to this, to this building. You know, I'm thinking that there needs to be some kind of response right now that takes us down to a level where the board is comfortable with the result. But that we might take some limited period of time. A to, A to vacate the units. I don't want to live with somebody. And attrition happens in a separate unit building naturally within a certain period of time. B, that, you know, a time limit starting with removal of one component of the necessary fixtures and ending with, well, removal along, and this is just my thought right now, along the lines of six months. So that if there is another solution that presents itself, that we don't have to tear everything down to the basement and build it back up again. So some period for looking for a further opportunity to amend it. And if in fact, we are permanently going to go down a number of units, then I would think that what the permit holder would look to do is combine the spaces so that each unit is a little bigger. Couple of the units are a little bigger. That still probably will not result in two kitchens being necessary.
You like? No, okay, thank you. Thanks. Anything else you want to add?
The only thing I want to add is that we've come full circle. It seems a couple of years ago, they were before the same board requesting that they didn't have to move that wall. They didn't have to create the parking spaces that they agreed to do during their special permit. So you said that it's going to be very costly to create two more parking spots, but it's more than just a two parking spots because you already got concessions to eliminate five others, give or take. I don't remember how many it was. So it's not just two we're talking about. It's really getting back to compliance with what you agreed to from the beginning. And again, it was a couple of years ago that they came before this board. I wasn't on it, but they said, yeah, we screwed up. We put in the wrong spot. And again, seven feet one direction. I don't see that, you know, conveniently both these letters from these two contractors saying the same thing, almost like there was like, hey, say it's really hazardous and that's going to be cost prohibitive and we have to come from bottom up. You know, so it seems like the, the contractors were mostly coached as to what possibly to say in order to make it look like it's practically infeasible to do the walk. And again, I've seen, I've been around construction a long, long time. I see some pretty amazing things with people and equipment that I don't see moving that thing seven feet as a major feat that's impractical to do. And I stated before that what the cost is, isn't an issue to us. What is issued to us is that you go, follow your plan as to what you originally said you're going to do or make concessions, get back, drop your units down to an acceptable level that meets the parking as my stance.
I very much respect your stance, sir. I, on a policy level, very much disagree that it is not completely without concern as to why the board should evaluate this. The way that projects are handled within any city affects the future investment because other investors see what did this, what did this contractor have to go through?
All, all, all complaint?
And $100,000 of parking space is not a small amount. That is $200,000 that could have otherwise been invested in the city in housing production or other things that will benefit the city to a greater extent than two off-street parking spaces.
Saying that they're not making any rent money. So this is, this is losing proposition right now?
So $200,000 added on to the cost of a project that has, I think, approached a million. Yes, yes, it is. Yes, it is.
As is our concern. Your investors.
It is your concern.
The biggest point is if they're basically wasting $200,000, then that could be put towards a much better use.
So, so let me put the equation, you, you, you. Go ahead.
Parking spaces, a parking lot that's not already built. Somebody was going to use it, keep moving it. I can absolutely see the argument. The parking lot already had an empty spot and you're going to throw away $200,000 and go ahead and change it? It's just a waste.
I, I personally form those, but I'll take.
So now, now getting back to your comment that you were saying that they've got a lot of money invested and everything else. And what, 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 what are we telling future investors to come to Gardner, right? What, what we're doing, if we keep making concessions, is that we're saying, go ahead and come on in and do what you want and just go back to the GBA and we'll branch it really.
I think the permit holder has offered concessions. We have offered, I know, I'm sorry. We have offered concessions. This permit holder has experienced what I understand to be the first review proceeding ever held in Gardner on a special permit. This is our, I believe, our fourth or fifth hearing here. They've experienced my cost. They had to have an engineered wall designed, applied for the permit. And all of that is going to go to waste. It's money down the drain because that wall is not going to be built. They would, they will have a sun concession. But there will be, you know, I hope at least seven units of housing that are currently being used, that are currently providing sufficient parking and are to the benefit of the city. And I think some reasonable response to this situation will help contractors understand that Gardner is a reasonable place to do business and construct a project.
The problem with that, Christine, is this has been going on for at least a year and a half. And they would have dealt with this back when we asked them to a year and a half ago. It would have cost them at the time they were estimating $30,000. Now, all of a sudden, dollars are becoming a major issue here. That has not, the concern of this board because they should have taken care of it when they had the opportunity. And they wouldn't be facing this. They created this problem. They created the problem by not making sure that wall was in the right position to start with. They didn't correct it when they could have and should have. Now the costs are driven up dramatically and all of a sudden it's our problem. That's not our problem. These folks created the problem. They need to fix it. And it's getting pretty tiresome hearing how all of a sudden all these costs are out of sight. They own it, let them fix it.
I'll interject at this time. We've got a lot of comments from Mr. Hanks, Mr. Cornet. They're all focusing pretty much on the same issue. We know the timeline here that I think has been used over time. But we're not going to solve it tonight. A few issues that we've put on the table. My question, would willing to give up another apartment? Lot cheaper, I think, than $200,000 to ship it back. There may be some newer legislation coming through, maybe take a look at that. And you need to talk. And plus, you still have outstanding items on Mr. Zucco's table. So we're not going to come to a solution tonight. I think, I want to say put the burden back on you and your client to answer the question. When are those going to be fixed? What is their decision to do about the parking? Let me ask the question on the parking. With the, I don't know, 300 Pine Street or some of the alternative spots, if you take that property and the requirement for their cars and you're going to put these cars there, is there adequate parking to handle all those cars?
There's adequate space to, there is one extra space there and one additional parking space can be added there to make up the two.
That's, that's what I think.
Even if we were to come up to the original point, until four, we'll be
I think I'm going to go back to when I introduced the meeting tonight, when we have a pretty hefty agenda. So I don't want to spend half of it on this one that's been around for 18 months. I think if you can meet with your client, some decisions have to be made with some very valid timelines. There were no additional extensions to do that. What do they want to do? How do they plan to correct it? Or make it as best as possible and say, this is it. You know, now it's definitely, I'll say against the law. You know, and make it as clear. I think there's some big issues that need to be corrected on Mr. Zucco's side. Especially with all the egresses and everything else. So I think we have to weigh the actions, weigh the dollars, and which is the better way to go. So if it's okay, I'm going to ask you, Attorney Tree, to provide another update next month. I'll afford an extension to go next month, a continuance, that we can start narrowing this down to getting maybe there's one item left or something. That's much better than, I think, it's an open book right now.
And would the board like me to submit an application for modification to help address this? Or shall we for now keep it within the review procedure?
I think it's time to come up with the best answer. No more, we can do this. Let's give the final answer. This is what we can do and this is our best answer. So I can come back and say, is that your final answer? And we'll, we'll forward and get this. I want to close this case. You know, I don't want this to be the legacy of this zoning board of a two-year case. They couldn't come to a solution. You know, we want to close it. I'm sure you want to close it. And Mr. Lombardi and his company wants to close it. So hopefully, let's do it. And see you next month. Let me ask you, do I have motion to continue this next month? Okay? All favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chant.
Okay? Thank you very much. Okay, the next case before the board. Case 2024-0901, continuance. Donald S. Foster, second. Zero Talka Avenue, parcel ID M1788, relief of side yard setback. And I'm going to take the next one with it at the same time. Case 2024-09-02, a continuance, a variance, the prior one is a variance also. Donald S. Foster, the second, zero Talka, parcel ID M17888, build a single family home.
Good evening, board members. Attorney Christine Tree, and I thank you for taking my place. I, I am here representing the owners, Margaret and Stanley, who are behind me. And they had given permission for Mr. Foster to proceed on the two applications, one for a use variance and the other for a dimensional variance. This is my first appearance on this case. There have been a number of proceedings before me and various questions that had been asked. At one point, there was a question of whether this was a Chapter 48, Section 6 grandfathered lot and the former solicitor
And, uh, the former solicitor, Attorney Flick, did reach a conclusion that the use was not grandfathered, so, um, there is no grandfathered use. Uh, Mr. Commissioner has issued a determination letter, um, to the effect that the dimensional grandfathering does not apply. Um, I disagree, but for purposes of this proceeding, I'm just going to note that I disagree. We have an existing application for the two variances. Um, and I do believe we need the criteria, so I'm going to proceed on that. Going to. I need to connect to the internet. So I'm going to note to the board that in an attempt to give it a good presentation, I added a video to this slideshow. And what it is. Video is creating problems. Right. Um, so what we have before you, um, you've seen it before, is a lot that has 50 feet of frontage and 7,400 square feet of area. It's about 150 to 160 feet long, and it's in Talca Ave. Um, Talca Ave, uh, was, uh, incorrectly marked by the assessor's office as, um, I believe, R1. And it is actually, um, in the IND2 district. The entirety of Talca Ave is a little offshoot from West Broadway. And it is entirely single-family homes and in the industrial 2 neighborhood. So what we are looking for is permission to build one single-family home, one modest, single-family home. And due to the determination letter, um, on the use, which is correct, a use variance is required in order to build a single-family home in the IND2 district. In addition, because the dimensional requirements have not been met, and that is the industrial district's requirement for 30,000 square feet of area as opposed to the 7,400 we have, 150 feet of frontage as opposed to the 50 we have, and a side yard setback of 20 feet as opposed to the 13 and 7 feet that we propose, both dimensionally and use-released. So this is the visual of the lot from the street. It's very level with a slight slope down, um, mostly clear. Um, on either side, there are single-family homes. It is a small dead-end street. And if we look at, um, the overhead satellite pictures, um, we can see, again, it's undeveloped. To the left, there is a single-family home, um, and to the right, there is a single-family home. Uh, if you can see the large roof to the right, um, I believe that was the Bolo Rama on West Broadway. That is not on Talca Street, but it is the only, uh, structure which fits within the, uh, district zoning. Um, and then here is an aerial view, um, of the neighborhood. Talca Ave has 10 lots, eight are single families. One is vacant, um, that is, as far as we know, non-buildable. Um, and the other ones are vacant, all in the IND2 zone. And then so that the board is familiar with the neighborhood. If it works. So this is a, a drone footage that went down Talca Ave. Um, and showing you again that the neighborhood is quiet, and the neighborhood is entirely single families, and that it has a dead end that is created by Route 2. See if I can get us on to the next slide. Um, so again, this is a review of our requests. And then what I'd like to do is review the variance criteria. So this is the first criteria. Little enforcement of the provisions of the code would involve substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, owing to circumstances relating to soil conditions, shape, topography, or structures, especially affecting such land and structures, but not affecting the general zoning district. Um, in your materials, I had compiled a table. Those are the 10 lots, um, on Talca Ave. Um, and an explanation of, uh, what they are, which is either vacant or single-family dwellings. So zoning, as far as I understand it goes, began in Gardner in 1974, um, with the adoption of the zoning ordinance. A number of these, uh, properties were constructed prior to that time. Um, but at least one variance has been issued to build a single-family dwelling on this, on this neighborhood, um, finding again that there were peculiar circumstances to its creation and the existing dwellings. I'm also going to have you note, um, that there is not one single lot that is developed on this street that is dimensionally compliant, um, certainly not with IND2. The area is, uh, too small. Um, for the most part, the frontage is too small. Um, and the most compliant, uh, property, which is 20 Talca, number three, even that property.
When you say it's non-compliant, are you saying it's non-compliant in industrial too?
Yes.
What about residential? Are there any even?
They are closer to residential. Um, so, but what residential? We can't just pick a residential district and pluck it out of the air and apply it to the IND2, so.
Uh, yeah, again, I guess, let me rephrase it again. What is the average, normal setback for the other units from the district?
So.
I can see.
I, I will say I laid it out in a table. I don't think I, uh, summed it up in average. But I would say that it's, uh, the side yard setbacks are generally somewhere in the 20s. We have one at 16, one at nine. And I believe the lowest one on the table is five. And that is on, uh, 17 Talbot as a side yard setback.
So Attorney Tree, safe to say, looking at that chart, the proposal for Mr. Letzgo and Mr. Foster. Oh, that's all. None of those properties meet all setbacks.
Correct.
They're either short on the front, short in the rear, or on the side setback. So none of them are compliant with them.
Yes, Mr. Chair, and that is my point, that we have a non-compliant neighborhood. The neighborhood is non-compliant as to use. The neighborhood is non-compliant dimensionally. It originates from this plan from 1925, which plotted out the whole area for a residential development. On the subject property, I believe there's two or three of the original lots. And that's how we ended up with this neighborhood. Um, and if you take a step back, you can see a little bit of the original lots in the layout, um, right now. So the shape and the existing structures are the, uh, criteria on which we, uh, base the application. The existing structures being the neighborhood of single-family homes on non-compliant lots that have built themselves up around it. Um, and the shape being small, thin, little frontage unusual in the IND2 district because this is a residential neighborhood in the IND2 district. Again, I, I just want to blame my otherwise wonderful paralegal for trying to jazz up this slide and putting it diagonally. But, uh, that's just a depiction of, uh, the neighborhood, uh, lots, all in IND2. This is the proposal. So the proposal, I know, marks 31.2 feet as the front setback, but there is no reason we cannot be compliant with the 40-foot setback. So there is no need to request that relief. It is perfectly fine to put two parking spaces, um, for this property. Um, the relief that's required is the frontage, the si- the size, and the side yard setbacks.
One of the things that, do you have a slide in that shows the distance between the two houses on each side and where this would be located?
I don't have a slide, but I did take the measurement, and I put that within the, um, written submission, so I can, if you give me just a moment, find that. It was substantial. Sorry, I know you have to move on.
Okay, I addressed Mr. Letzgo on this one. Mr. Letzgo. Looking at that slide right there. And where, where the house is located. What is the distance from the top line, where it says 150 feet? What is the distance of the nearest structure of your neighborhood on the south side? On the north side? Approximately? If we go to the south side, uh, and this part of it. What's the distance from your property line, similar structure on the left? Okay. So there's an imposition, anything, on the north side, but not, depends how to call significant enough, but if you take your 15, your 15 or 70, you get 22 feet between all structures. Okay, and this time it's put in perspective of how much this home would encroach on the borough. Okay? So, so thank you.
Um, the version that we came up with, um, to the north side is 536 West Broadway. Um, and that is 37 feet, and then to the south side, within 25, and that would be 73. 73. The next criteria is that desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public hood or creating or aggregating a safety hazard. We just discussed the fact that there is sufficient distance between the buildings that is proposed. Um, and, uh, given that the use would be consistent with the remainder of the neighborhood, um, there would be no imposition in the use there. This is a dead-end street, um, where we provide adequate off-street parking. The, um, backing out and, uh, pulling in should not create any additional safety hazard greater than presented by other buildings. It is also the not, the first lot off of West Broadway, so it's not right there. These are examples of the other, um, single-family homes in the neighborhood. And the size, um, of what we are proposing to build is consistent with these other buildings. And that right there is 20 Talca Ave, that was the southern.
That lot is pretty much clear, though.
Yes, it is. At one point, the family were gardening on it, um, but never living, never owning any abutting property, et cetera, et cetera. Um, so desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of the code. Um, we rely on the fact that, uh, the intent of the zoning ordinance is to provide for the most appropriate use of property. This lot should never be used for industrial purposes unless the remaining single-family homes in the neighborhood are torn down. I cannot imagine the imposition of a factory going on a 55, 150-foot lot. Um, but I will additionally point, um, to the mayor's State of the City address this year, which pointed out, um, the housing crisis that is being faced in Commonwealth and that is being faced in Gardner. Um, and that is, although we've had population growth of 5%, um, the number of houses has decreased by 20, 21% and the sale price has increased over 100%. Um, so the type of dwelling that we're looking at building, small, single-family home, small lot in a single-family neighborhood, that is very much in line with both state and local policies, um, on increasing available appropriate quality housing available to Gardner residents. And with that, I end my slideshow, and I assure you it was a great video. Sorry you didn't get to see it.
The only question I have was, is the applicant, uh, married to that house plan? Could they go with a narrow, narrower plan, a deeper?
Uh, not married to the plan, and, and I also want to point out there were two different setbacks, 7 and 13. The reason was that we assume there's going to be a three-foot concrete uncovered walkway into one side of the house. Otherwise, if the walkway could be moved, the steps could be moved. It can be a 10 and 10, so that it is even on both sides. Um, and, and open to a narrower, but it needs to be a functional, um, button. So if it's 20 feet of setback between the two, that would mean that the structure is fully compatible. So I think there's a little bit, but not a huge amount of being there. I don't think going down to a 20-foot structure would be, um, quite, quite such comfortable, um, but.
Bernie, do you have any questions or comments? Mr. Hanks, I just want to respond to your question, and I think we raised that question oh, several meetings ago about, if make a. oh several meetings ago about if make it a little narrower, give us more side setback, but if we look at a lot of the properties in that development, if you want to call it, uh some of them are like seven feet, same thing. And I think if you shrink the width of that out, you know, we can bring it closer to twenty feet, but now you're not maintaining, in my opinion, not maintaining the character of the neighborhood. And turn themselves into structures of the single-family homes. Otherwise, this would be long and narrow, and you would like, you know, for the sake of maintaining the character of the neighborhood, that's how I look at it is. A lot of them are already in violation of the side setbacks, so this is not going to be the only one that violates side setbacks. Okay, that's just my comment, and how I looked at it from day one on this one. No other questions, no notes, files, or emails? There's a shot. Good, thank you. Mr. Zupa, would you have any comment you'd like to make? No? Okay. Mr. Hank, anything further? Thank you. Um, I think we've wrapped this one, at least in my mind. My hero motion to move on the application, we've got two application variances here. One is for the residential structure, and then the other one is for the side setbacks. We've got plenty of frontage, more than adequate rear.
We, we don't have adequate frontage, Mr. Chair, and we don't have adequate side, and we don't have adequate area. Because area is thirty thousand.
Adequate area, yeah. Why do you hear a motion move on all those requests for variance? Would be what, three of them?
Uh, use variance, three dimensional variances.
Eight four.
When I board with Mr. Chair, uh, well, we do have two applications. One is for um like use variance. Obviously should be heard, and then separately, if that is affirmed, then we would go for the next one to measure. Do I want a presentation?
Yeah.
I intended to incorporate both issues within my presentation.
That's all right, I called them both together, so I'm together, but what other additional information would you like?
I don't necessarily need another presentation on it. I um I guess my take is that had this been zoned residential, we wouldn't have be having this conversation. You know, the law was created initially as a residential law, intend to be a residential law. So that's where I'm at at that.
What would you propose?
Calling. I'm at your mercy, Mr. Chair, whether you wanted to go.
I think on both.
Okay.
Thank you. I have a motion on the two oh two four oh nine oh one. Donald Foster, zero talc, for you from I'm going to drop down to the next one, two oh two four oh nine oh two, Donald Foster, doing a single-family house. And that's all. Your motion on that. All those in favor? Aye, aye, aye. All the polls. No opposition? Any further comments or discussion on this? None? Motion granted. Now I'll call the next one. Case two oh two four oh nine oh one. Donald Foster, the second, zero talc, relief on side yard setbacks.
For the side yard area. So we have multiple houses.
And
a dimensional variant.
Got to bring in the area because we only have
we need to grant a a uh an area of use variance. And so we did use that. We just did use, so now now we have to do a dimensional for frontage and area and set side yard setback. Correct?
That's the only one.
Have adequate frontage, I believe.
Oh, we're going to get five feet of front.
We have adequate front yard setback.
Front yard setback, yeah.
I was thinking setback. Yeah, okay, so we've got setbacks, the side and yard yardage on the property.
I'll move to um on this application.
Can I have a second? Second, second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye, aye, aye.
Anything, those multiple variances? Say aye, aye.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair and Board members, much appreciated.
Mr. Hank. I said thanks, Mr. Hank, bring it over. Okay. Oh, you next?
Right.
Okay. Attorney, you'll be presenting this next case, is that correct?
That's correct, that's um case number twenty twenty-four dash zero nine dash zero three, B C F Investments LLC. Um, this is a request for a special permit um relative to a third unit uh being restored in a currently two-unit property um with the addition of two parking spaces. The last request from the board was for a topographical plan. And uh an engineered plan need to be located, we had asked for a continuance. Um, the first quote was quite high. Uh, we spent uh some time investigating whether a conversion to an ABU uh property might be more appropriate. Um, the conclusion is that the property is not suited to that. Um, so we will be proceeding to ask for the special permit, um but we are requesting a two-month continuance now to get that plan drawn up. Um, and I do have a letter with the request and the continuance fee. No, I I want for the continuance to be that, to get.
Oh, you're continuing, I'm sorry. Speakers are horrible and I'm out of hearing, so it's
I am.
The double negative on the hair.
I I don't know whether to go closer and then it echoes or
One up.
I know. So we would be requesting a continuance to the April meeting. Um, because I don't want to come back here again and ask for another.
I need those.
Okay, I think I was trying to find it, but I didn't have the phone. Okay.
I'll second that, yes, move to April.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All, no opposition, continue. Two months, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next place, Maran. Two oh two four, zero one, zero one, uh zero eleven. Roy Copeland, six years of K D Roy, personal ID, N thirty-two dash twenty-one dash six. But in twenty-four by thirty-six ranch style, single-family home. Are you Mr. Copeland? That's what I thought I.
Yeah, my name's, my name's Josh Jocelyn, I'm with Grazing Mary.
That's fine, you have to. Think to catch up with a lot of activity that's happened, uh that's why it's a continuance, because of the way the structure was built at one time and where it was located, and we moved forward to con- uh converse with the Conservation Commission. Correct, yep. Really, the result that we're looking at here and the results of your conversation with the uh Conservation Commission made some modifications. Correct, yep, but why don't we pick it up there? We don't need to go all the way back to step one.
Okay, yeah, so ba- basically, like you said, we've gone to the Conservation Commission several times and ultimately, they were not going to allow us to put any structure within that sixty-foot no-build zone. Originally, we had, like you said, the twenty-four by thirty-six structure proposed. They requested that we turn it into an L-shaped structure. Um, I'm sorry, the the printer was a little faint, but essentially, we created an L-shaped structure that is sixty point two feet from the wetlands on one corner and sixty point five feet from the wetlands on the other corner. So just barely meeting their sixty-foot setback, and the L-shaped structure is the exact same square footage as the twenty-four by thirty-six house. And we added the concrete patio on it, um so we'd be seeking relief from the front setback of a four point nine feet and side setback of eight point zero feet. Uh, and the eight-foot side setback is uh the same setback that was there with the existing mobile home. Um, I would point out that one kind of unique feature of this property is that it's located at a roadway intersection, so the the frontage that we're seeking the four point nine foot front setback from is at an angled right-of-way, where it's actually about twenty-one point nine feet from the edge of the pavement. If you look at that plan, you can see that the, the right-of-way itself is angled, but the pavement is a hard right angle. And then I did, I put the dimensions on of the neighboring properties, uh the property to the north is sixteen point eight feet from that front right-of-way, and the property to the south is seventeen point four feet from that front right-of-way. And our front left corner is fifteen point five feet from that from the front line, and then four point nine from that angled property line, which is uh that angle is right-of-way, I was discussing.
I'm looking at Matthew Gagney. On the right front corner. Talking about roughly five feet.
Yeah, that's correct, yeah. Front left, yeah, would be fifteen and a half.
Thirty-two feet on the left side.
Yep.
Okay.
And I know the, the owner of the property did bring some photos in that might help you visualize it a little better, because I know four point nine feet sounds close, but if you look at it compared to the fence that's there, compared to the road, it it really seems reasonable and in use for that for the neighborhood.
What we have, I'm going to ask a question right now. If I'm looking at the property, look at K D Roy being to my right. We have the property, well, which is gold, 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 yeah. Your butter. I'm sorry, could be some stuff this, this question is kind of important. Yeah. Has he been contacted or did Mr. Copeland have a, or you have any conversations with them about this new plan and does he feel it impacts him? So he gets Mr. Copeland to come up with it.
I don't know if uh Mr. Copeland's uh contacted him directly, but I believe he was notified about this hearing tonight.
Oh, I didn't quite get that. Did you get what he said? Because I didn't really hear.
I'll say it again.
I was just saying, I don't know if uh Mr. Copeland's contacted him directly, but I know he should have been notified for the meeting tonight. I don't know if he stopped doing.
Roy, Roy Copeland, I I haven't talked to him about that issue. I talked to him about it a month and a half ago when I was out there at the property, um but not on that topic.
And then you wish me to keep moving your house, yeah?
Hasn't, he hasn't made him known to me if he has. He hasn't said anything like that.
I would like to point out that from the side setback, we're, we're maintaining the eight-foot setback that was there with the existing structure. So there was the mobile home that was there with eight feet from that fence line, and the proposed structure, we're keeping it eight feet, but we're just shifting it closer to the road. So it's not getting any closer to his side property line, just closer to the right of way.
Hey, I'll share the issue with you. Original plan did not have the L-shaped house. When this was published or in the paper, it did not include this, include the original house. With the original modification. Uh, we have a modification. Let's see, why do you think it's important to know about the butter? If he's fully aware of this, does he have any impact or concern, et cetera? Somehow interrupt or whatever he does, and he would be against it. Because if he does, then we would need to republish in the paper. Okay. Because the butter's got to know what's happening, and other than yourselves and us, maybe most of them don't know the house has been redesigned. You follow me?
To the chair's point, this, this was what was published in the newspaper? And now it's, it's right, this, this is what you initially applied for. Right, and now, now that's, to, to his point, it has changed, and it probably needs a reposting so that the butter does have an opportunity to realize it's not the same thing that he got a notification for six months ago, a year ago, I don't know how long, you've been at it for a while and all that, so.
That, that, that's understandable, yeah.
Yeah, ju- just for, you know, you want to cover all your bases, because you don't want an appeal after the fact. You know, should we grant something, then all of a sudden the neighbor comes along like, that's not what was posted, that's not what I saw.
Yeah, that can happen, but I'm just going to add a little to that. Uh, I had a conversation with the city solicitor today about this. And he's the one who raised the question. Is the butter aware of this? Because I raised the issue of, if you are to reapply, you know, it's another three hundred and fifty dollars. You know, so we're trying to control the cost here, but like he suggested he called it in standing, but if you got a, or issued him a letter, a certified letter sent that he would sign and his signature would be notified, that you notified him of the change, and that he has no issues with the change at all, and get that back, then we can look at that, but.
I, I realize you got a legal opinion on that, but what about the neighbor across the street? What about anybody with a three hundred feet of this could have standing? That, that, that would be my concern, anybody with a three hundred feet has, has standing.
So we'll, we'll expand it.
Well, if he wants to march up and on the street and go talk to everybody?
No, shoot them all with certified letter.
Okay.
And you can, Mariella can give you the listing of the people.
So would we, otherwise we'd have to reapply for a new variance out here, we couldn't just continue it with the.
But the letters have to go out certified, and signature notified of the butter. And then return back to Mariella and zoning and look at it. It would have to move you out to next month, I would assume. You would want to get it back quickly, but not with the weather we've been having, we're not going to start building tomorrow. So I mean, I think there's time and time and the challenge. But that was the option the city solicitor said, if you want me to do that, and they can be called it in standing, but if not, then you have to new application to file with this plan, go through the whole process you've already done. So let me ask you the question, would you, which way would you prefer to go? Because it depends on how I'll move tonight. You can either do the letter or say I'm just going to reapply. Because it depends on how I'll move tonight. You can either do the letter or say I'm just gonna reapply.
So if I was to reapply, would I be, I would be in the next meeting?
If you get in the timeline, if we've got the timeline, oh no, we still have time to get an application in. Last Friday?
So I
So you have make it into a paper meeting?
I did send and I emailed an updated application of the new with that plan that you have now along the bulk of the plan you have now, I believe, to Mariella, uh, on Friday. Okay, but
So we would have to.
So that 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 was just an update to this application. That's not considered a new application.
One, we don't know that.
Um, if it's gonna push us to April, I would think it's probably better to try to get the letters prior. Right.
All the letters will be notified anyway.
So I guess, I guess my my thought is if if we can contact the butter and get them to sign the letters prior to the March meeting, then it would be up to March.
So that would be your choice?
I would think so, unless.
The only thing about.
Unless Roy's okay waiting for April.
Thing is, if you if you do that, you're gonna have to chase all your butters to make sure they all sign and.
Yeah, someone someone could be away on vacation and if you miss one, you've missed them all.
I I think it would be best to go with the procedure that you normally go with, where you mail it out and, um, send it to them. But I just have one question with him having sent that information on Friday, that wouldn't, can be possible to use that information for just the next.
Need players in this that you're a butters. You know, if anybody's gonna raise a concern, it's gonna be that. And just even no matter when you get this to us, your butters don't see this. So I guess.
So I g- he was asking if with me submitting Friday, we still wouldn't be able to get onto the March meeting, it's have to be April.
Last Friday was the deadline for March. You know, with the completed application, not just the new form. So I'm gonna ask, again, I just wanna make sure, your choice is A, reapply, B, you would handle the letters, certified letters and all that, then give.
I'll I'll reapply.
A, what, A?
A.
Okay.
Point of matter, if he's if he's gonna reapply, would he not be withdrawing this one without prejudice?
Correct. You understand what he just said? You can withdraw this application, you know, without prejudice. That means you can reapply anytime. You just withdraw, it's two years before you can reapply. So A, withdraw without prejudice, B, just withdraw.
I don't like the first one.
Oh, I don't do it with A. Okay. I hear a motion to move on the application or allow withdraw without prejudice.
Taking motion that, uh, the applicant withdraw without prejudice?
Second, hey, all in favor?
Aye.
I I both application withdrawn without prejudice. Okay, the next case. Case two O two five dash O one dash O one, Kristoff Sardia, two forty-two West Broadway, partial ID, R seventeen dash sixteen dash ten, we leave unsigned in Sawa.
Hello, can you hear me? You can. I hear you. My name is Kristoff Sardia. And this is Ken Wong. Ken's the owner of Sawa Restaurant, the new building that we renovated where South Side used to be. And Mr. Chair, would you like me to explain what I'm asking for?
I know what you're gonna do. I just don't have the whole record.
Okay.
All on the floor. I I have read it. I know what you wanna do. No. Oh. Okay, Mr. Chavie, I'm ready.
Ready? Okay. So through through the building process, we had come across the sign, uh, the sign zoning issue, which neither Ken or I were aware of, that there was a limit on how big signs were. And Ken purchased the signs before we were aware of it. Um, Mr. Zupa kicked us back out for the sign size. And so we're here requesting to put two signs, one on the front of the building as it faces two forty-two West Broadway. And one on the other side as it faces, uh, the plaza, the tym- the, um, it's not symphony, it's the, where the Starbucks is, the new plaza. And both signs that we have are a little bit bigger. As as I, the way that I read the the ordinance, it's got to be four feet high and his are four foot six. And it's got to be less than eighty square feet, which we would be. And on the secondary one, which would be on the side facing the new plaza, it's got to be four, less than forty square feet, which we're right close on that.
How far off we are now? Roughly.
It's, we're we're four foot six by nine foot. That's on the primary sign. On both, they're both the same size. Oh, they're both the same size? But it's, if you look at the picture that the architect drew and it's it's Mr. Hanks, you'll know the, it's, uh, I think it's Mark Schreiber who drew it. Um, but the signs have like lettering above them. So it it's kind of hard to give the exact dimension. Yeah, this this doesn't show it very well, actually. They're both four foot six by nine. Correct.
So is the, so really are you applying, are you looking for, um, permission to put, uh, six inches different or is it also the width?
It's the six inch.
Just the six inch on the top.
Height, correct.
Yes.
And then.
Also some square footage.
The square footage, I think we're compliant on in both in the way that I read the sign ordinance, but it but there's a second thing, which is that there's something in the side ordinance about if you're above, in no case are you allowed to be above a buttress wall. And in this case, we would like to be above the buttress. So can you, you've all probably driven by that building. There's kind, no, no, I haven't. I'm sorry. You know where the old South Side was? Yeah. It's that building. Oh, okay. We keep completely renovated. So it has a mansard roof that's about six feet. You know, it it's eight feet off the ground. It goes up about six feet. And it's just like maybe a you know, ten pitch or something. And the way that the architect drew the sign is it comes up and it sticks up above the mansard roof a little bit like this. So it is above the roof line. It is. So so that's the second part of relief that we're asking for.
Well, the the question I would have is that according to the rendition here.
Yep.
Uh, you could have the option of lowering.
Correct.
Uh, the sign down at at least six inches.
Correct.
Uh, if you choose.
My my argument would be though, that in the neighborhood where it's at, you've got two plazas on each side of it. It's all commercial around it. And we're not talking a gigantic sign, nor are we talking it be twenty feet in the air. It's just gonna be six, you know, a foot higher than the roof line. I don't think it's gonna negatively impact anything, but I also don't know why this, why exactly the sign ordinance is written, what you're.
I understand your thinking. Cornet comment. You can meet sign, not extend it. You've got plenty of space on the wall, that sign, up to the wall.
Yes, I think so.
Ordinance is set to maintain some kind of conformity, so he wanted to put the signs up, you know, and you put it up at six feet higher. I mean, six inches, he puts another one up, that's only eight inches. So you see what I'm saying? Things just get out of control. And was any contact made with the building commissioner before the design was purchased?
No.
First of all, then nobody talked to the building department. Well, this happens periodically and we have to be careful because the old, you know, if things set precedence.
Sure.
Oh, if we can grant certain signs and depth is okay, then the guy next door comes up to the sign and so you gave it to them. So now we're in the buy, you know, and it makes it hard. And that's why the ordinance is written to maintain conformity. Uh, so everything that's natural, not out of filter. And I think looking at the sign, Mr. Cornet's comment, you have adequate space to drop that sign six inches.
That's correct.
On the thing.
But.
You could always cut the sign. We.
So we we thought about it after we, you know, it was informed by commissioner, you know, the sign is too big. But the sign itself also have our name on it, S A W A, which is on the edge of it. If it's smaller, we will cut it right away and we don't have to go through this.
So that's option D. That is not a viable option. Option A is to lower the sign on that building. Now, why would you not want to lower the sign if you're in compliance? I mean, we got an issue. Nobody contacted building department, went ahead and bought it, and now sort of we remember our first case. Now the burden falls on the planning, on the zoning board because you bought the sign. You follow me?
I follow you, Mr. LaFawn, but, uh, it's it's not, it's not that we were avoiding talking to the commissioner. I've been through that building multiple times before we started work. This is, this is, and I said it in my cover letter that, uh, I was suggested by somebody at the last meeting to write. Um, it's just a mistake.
Yeah, and I understand. I wasn't insinuating yet to converse with Mr. Zupa. We have had done numerous interactions over. But there is an option, not to cut the sign. I didn't want to enter the cut the sign. Just to lower the sign a couple inches. And you need that going up and all that.
I my concern of lowering is, you know, um, is he gonna have to knock, what what what's most they call it underneath?
Floor clearance. There's a, there's a, there's a mansard roof that sticks out, an overhang that comes out over entrance and comes in there. So it'd be awfully close and it would be about eight feet off the ground where the bottom of the sign would be. So could I ask Mr. Zupa's opinion? Tom, would you have an opinion on this in terms of the height of the sign on the, you know, where that front overhang is?
Um, not sure what opinion you're asking me of or for, though I know the sign is, sign's too big in a couple ways, right? So the sign is too tall. And it's too high. So I'm not sure. I understand what the board is asking. Can you lower the sign? Are you asking me if lowering the sign, um, puts it at an increased risk of damage or I'm not really sure what you're asking me?
I think I think on the side that faces the big plaza, uh, where it's just a parking lot, lowering the side would have zero, zero impact on usability. But on the side where you're walking right in the front door and it's right over you, it would be a little bit nice visually to have it up out of your face. Your your plan shows it's nine foot six inches from the from the pavement to the bottom of the sign. As I zoom in on that print, must. Okay, thank you. Zooming the wrong thing.
I would assume we're talking two, two issues. One, we're right now dealing with the sign being too tall over the over the road. But that doesn't make the issue that the sign itself is too big.
Correct.
So we, let's not miss the fact that there's two issues.
So not, you you're saying seems very, um, simple, I'm not, in a negative format, it's just.
Correct.
Has your name on it and it's, what is it? Black letters, white background or did you have a a a picture of it, a good renditioning of what it looks like? It it's black letters, white background. Black, so it's it's not trimmable. You take three inches off the top, three inches off the bottom, you still have a decent looking sign? Cause it's not gonna change the 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 font or the size of the letters, because it, I'm I'm looking at this and there's a lot, a lot of white background. Yeah, thi- this doesn't, he'll show you a picture, but this this is an architect's rendition where he just wrote something in it. Yeah. It the actual thing shows the logo, which is circular and it comes up kind of to the top of the sign. So. So that red circle doesn't show, doesn't show on there. Yeah. So 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 one sign you're allowed eighty square feet, the other one you're allowed forty. Correct. And they're both the same size. They're both four and a half by nine. Correct. But it's, it's the, it's the height, the 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 height of the sign ordinance is four feet. Uh, so so when it, when it was, uh, the Borden Grill and all the other restaurants before, th- th- I used to go to have a a pavilion, um, pedestal sign up on the side of the road as well? That that was allowable to be grandfathered because it was existing. But yes, it's still there and we put a new insert in that. Okay, so so that sign is still there. So that's highly highly visible. That's that's what that's what's gonna draw you in. Yep. These other signs kind of tell you, here's my, here's my front door. Correct. Yeah, okay.
Yeah, so these are true identification signs to let them know.
Yeah, here's my front door.
Where it's located. Yeah, so I agree with Mr. Hanks. This is more of, this is where you come in.
Correct, and it's aesthetics. It's a, it's a it's a new restaurant that he's, Ken and his wife are proud of, and it it's, it's part of what the look of the outside of the building is. If if the board was willing to considering, consider letting us use the signs we have, we would certainly be willing to lower them so they're not above the mansard roof. If there's a compelling reason for precedence that you'd like that to be.
And I I just wanna add one more thing because, uh, it was my mistake that we didn't contact commission from the possession. Out of thousand things, we communicate, we didn't communicate this particular thing and he was purchased, paid for it and made. And I just hate to have to throw them or let it just sit there and redo it, right? You know, I would like to reuse it. And let's say five, ten years later, the sign is broken and I have to redo it. Now definitely make you make the right size to replace those if that happens.
Right, what what is, what are the, what's the material the sign is made out of? Is it, um, plywood? Is it plastic?
Uh, it's aluminum material, metal and plastic outside with, uh, letters being made with, uh, plastic as well, the lighting inside it.
Oh, so it's an aluminum housing with a, um, some kind of plastic poly. Yeah.
It's something right out, yeah.
Yeah. So it's a, so it's illuminated from internal, internally illuminated.
Are the, is the, are the letters illuminated or is the whole sign?
Letters is illuminated. The
Just the letters.
Sign itself outside, it has, uh, standing still at the back of attack nature.
Have you talked to the sign company, see if they could trim it down on all four sides to get you to the forty square feet? Is that, or does it make a whole new sign, or can they modify that one? Can't modify the sign. Yeah. I'm trying.
We did try.
We we asked those questions before we, we were trying to avoid having to ask.
I'm just, uh, but the first thing we said, can we cut it to smaller? Then we look at it, all those letters are on the edge of it. So we let start off and then we contact liner sign, other option needed.
Well, Mr. Chavie, I have a question for you because you answered so so quickly to this question. Have you contacted the sign company to see if they can make? Well, Mr. Travia, I have a question for you because you answered so so quickly to his question. Have you contacted the sign company to see if they can make these adjustments for the modification?
We 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 contacted, we talked to Jake Lyman, who did the other sign out front, and then we looked at it together. And yes, we contacted the supply place, which is Ken's contact. And no, it's it can't be done with those existing signs.
Have you ever caught slaughtering?
Well, I guess I'm gonna have a question for Tom. What what is signboard area? How do we define signboard area? I'm I'm in a sign by law, but in order, you know, I'm trying to talk and read at the same time, is it? I'm just trying to establish how how are we designing signboard area? What is it? The most extreme of display area, the total surface area of the sign. Individual letter sign or irregular shaped sign shall be the areas of the smallest rectangle into which the letters, the shapes will fit. The sign faces are placed back to back and face in opposite direction. The display area shall be defined as the area of one face of the sign. What did I say?
I have I have Mr. Zupa's letter for me to me here if it's helpful.
So, Mr. Building Commissioner.
So it's so it's not mainly a little manufacturing, it will be defined as a whole temporary spot, so it's definitely a little patchy spot. And it doesn't get specific enough, it's just the display area within the housing, it's a display area outside of housing. I give an example when we did Poland, uh, theirs was measured by the housing. So the outer end is the upper housing, the entire display area of that one face.
Well, the only only comments I have is that it is criteria, the criteria is different. And I wouldn't know if they took that into account, certainly shape, topography, the land location, the land is more isolated than uh than say in a mall or or a forum. And I don't want to put words in your mouth. I just want you to understand is the fact that um it's not near any other commercial properties in substance, if that's part of the process.
Uh, you you had asked, when we chatted at the last meeting, when there was no quorum, um, a couple of you gentlemen had, and Laurie had asked me to put together those reasons. I did a letter that I brought to Mariella, which I I uploaded to the file. Um, and the reasons for the appeal is is one, the one that we're both talking about, we purchased the wrong sign. So there's there's a uh our mistake. Um, but that that's a reason that we we have them, we'd like to use them if possible. And then to the second, the topography in the area, uh, the the building is in a commercial area surrounded by two shopping malls. And on the other side, there's the Cumberland Farms. There's only residential area on just one side and neither of the signs face the residential area. And I don't think these signs will be any more impactful than the building itself and all the cars in the parking lot, nor would they be any more impactful than the surrounding commercial shopping areas that are there. And then the the third reason that I stated was that good signage is appropriate on a commercial building, in my opinion, to identify its purpose. These signs will be no more impactful than the signage that it's always been on the building during its tour as a restaurant. I've been a restaurant, uh, it was Southside, and before Southside, it was Mahaki. I don't remember that, but some of you might. Um,
They're not watching.
I I don't think it's going to be, what we're asking for, I don't think it's going to be negatively impactful on the neighborhood in anything.
Well, definitely lower it, but, but Hank, Tom, I don't think I'm spotting him. If you go into the signs, you read display area. Am I misinterpreting this incorrectly? It says the display area of an individual letter sign or irregular shaped sign shall be the area of the smallest rectangle into which the letters or shape will fit.
That's an individual letter sign. So what you do is create a some letter A, draw a rectangle, stick that letter A.
Okay.
Smallest rectangle possible.
Okay, thank you.
This is the individual water sign. This would be, you'd be looking at whole surface area of the sign.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Do you have any further questions, Mr. Hank?
I have all of them. Um. So you're not seeing an issue with dropping this down?
Correct.
You've not, that's that's not an issue anymore that you have the clearance to drop a sign down if need be, so it's not over the roof line?
It's not what we want to do, and I don't think it would look aesthetically as well as it would if it was six inches above the mansard roof. But if you're willing to grant us permission, we're willing to do that. And I think we can do it.
If my only other thing is, um, are you willing to, I hate to put it like this way, would you be willing to replace that one that exceed that six square feet, six square inches, excuse me, too much? Say in sixty days or ninety days, or put a promotional banner there in its place and do you replace that sign? I don't know what what you're paying for this sign, so I'm just.
Two side, it's two sides. It's one that pays
One's performing. But I thought you said you could have eighty square feet on one sign. You you got, you said they're both the same size squ- size.
Oh no, the way that I read the ordinance, the one on the front of the building facing West Broadway has to be less than eighty square feet. One on the other side facing the new plaza has to be less than forty square feet, and I think we're over that by a few inches.
Right, so so there's only one that's not compliant for area, but they're both not compliant in height.
Right, well, the the height you can deal with because you have the height to drop them down, but There's two heights. There's the height above the mansard roof, which in, it says in the bylaw, you don't, can't go above a mansard roof.
Right.
That's one thing. The other thing is the height of the sign itself. In the bylaw, it says it can't be more than four feet. We're at like four feet six inches.
Oh, so they're both four.
So there's so there's there's three different areas noncompliant between the two sides of the
So the only com- the only comment I have that's in an area that I think that uh we would have considered it would be less impactful than anything else. It's all by, for the most part, even though it's a commercial environment, it is in an area that really is, it's more of a standalone. And I don't know if it's six inches would make that much difference. Uh, it can be that, but it From that point, how far you are from the sign and your arm has rolled or whatever, six inches, it's not a significant impact. You probably don't feel this down. So, any other questions or comments? Unless we call it, unless you're gonna give the signs, because they're all, they're gonna be, they're there as best.
Up to the board's decision.
Hey, are there any city officials who would like to speak regarding this request, this application? Any, any city officials you'd like to speak to?
I know he's had had one comment. So I would agree with the board. I think six inches is a minimal amount of space. Not going to notice that six inches in height from the road. Um, it was included in the denial letter simply because following the letter of zoning, that's part of it. Really, the the bulk reason why I believe they're coming forward is because uh the sign is to stick up above the the parapet, which is what that actually says. Uh, it's the question.
Are there any others who'd like to speak regarding this application? Any of us to speak regarding this application? Any interested parties who'd like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of us? Is there anyone here who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone here would like to speak in opposition to this application? Who elected, who comments on any of those requests? No, just needs a board. Do I hear a motion from one request? No. All those in favor of granting this application? Say aye.
Aye. What are we voting on? To to accept the the oversize of six square inches or we accepting the height?
With con- with conditions of lying, the with the condition of lying, the height of the the sign does that doesn't, size of
But we would, I granted the area for the size, but not the height.
Sorry, it's not
The height has to conform with the property character as the bylaw.
Yes.
Yeah.
Understand that? Okay, so try to rephrase that. Lowering the application of lowering the sign so it won't be over the parapet and allowing maybe extra six inches of area. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. No opposition. Granted, those can just
Thank you, thank you very much.
Now, when you get your sign or anything, please confer with the building department.
I didn't hear that.
Mr. Farnum. So I said, when you get your sign, location, everything, please confer with the building department, make sure it's in the right place. All set to go. Okay. On this case, two oh two five dash oh two dash oh one variant, Christoph Charia. One oh eight Grant Street, cross ID R twenty two dash seventeen dash fourteen, relief on rear setback for second egress.
Good evening, uh, I'm Scott Garnier. This is an existing two family that I'm renovating and there is like many Gardner two families, there's a two side porches with an entrance on the first floor that goes into a hall with stairs that go up to the second floor that enters into the second floor apartment. So essentially there's no second egress out of the building. And it's on Grant Street, which is below P V D Street. So it's, there's two streets coming down a hill. So this is in the middle or the bottom of the hill. And the setbacks are tight on the three sides that doesn't already have the porch on it and the porch runs the entire length of the building. So I'm suggesting that we put a secondary egress on the rear side of the building in the rear left corner where on the first floor, we will just be walking out at grade. It's the only place that we'd be able to do a secondary egress, walking out at grade. And then on the second floor, there'd have to be a three foot by three foot clear landing with a set of stairs going down. It's about ten feet to the property line there. And there's a retaining, one of those old fashioned poured concrete retaining walls halfway up the slope. And then there's probably another twenty five feet of woods and another fifteen feet of elevation before you get to somebody else's backyard on P V D Street. So this would be a secondary egress for safety purposes only. I think it would be very low impact in the neighborhood. And I think it would be the best place. You, it's not visible from the street. And it's not going into the side setback for a side neighbor instead with, which would have to be two and a half stories of structure on the side. On the back, it's just the one landing for the second floor coming down.
Uh, both of these, is both of those rooms occupied?
No, the whole building is vacant. I'm I'm renovating.
Everything is vacant, so I just wanted to say. And so, Charlie, I have a couple of comments in the make.
Yep.
First of all, looking through your packet.
Yep.
Uh, I find it incomplete.
Okay.
In the application, it's having a plot plan. There's nothing in here that represents a plot plan. I have no idea, the board has no idea on your side dimensions, your property lines, et cetera. So it's hard for us to look at this, especially the one that was drawn with the magic marker.
Yep.
Not sure how far that is, if it's off the property line, the rear, I don't know. And I mean, you made a comment that I don't know if you, ten feet or fifty feet. There's nothing that tells me property lines and dimensions and then the actual dimensions of the structure you want it to belong.
I did get the property lines from the gardener website that show the side and the in the back view and they're in there. And my comment was that it's it's ten feet to the rear setback, but behind that there's about twenty foot of twenty five foot of trees before the next house.
But to Cameron's point, I mean, it'd be nice to have a plot plan that be showing the building and all the dimensions that you have all in one. Hard to visualize this. That's the package to have.
I'd be happy to do a plot plan that I pay a surveyor to do, and I'd be ha- happy to do an architectural plan showing a three foot by three foot landing with stairs. But if we continued it, maybe you could give me a general sense that you like my way of thinking. I got to put a second egress on this building somewhere, and there's nowhere that I can put it that doesn't meet setbacks. So I'm, what I'm describing is where I think is the least impactful place to the neighborhood and the best place to put it on the building.
I understand that.
Okay.
Hi. The application tells me what you need. This came in incomplete. If this ever gets appealed and goes to court, I have nothing here to defend in terms of Where's the plot plan? How do you know what the dimensions are? Well, they follow me.
So a certified plot plan is, a certified plot plan's in the list of things in the application?
Yes.
I'm gonna make an offer.
Okay.
I'm gonna continue this case to next month.
Yep.
I asked you to bring in a plot plan that would be, mortgage plot plan or anything going up. There's one out there. There's a copy because if you went through a bank, you know,
Yep.
they're all going to require a plot plan. And give us all the dimensions, you know, front, side, back, and you've got that egress coming down from the second floor on the side.
Correct.
How wide is it going to be? The height. So we know exactly what we're working with, but this is, in my opinion, going in blind. You know, and I know you're going to do the right thing, but if there is a court case, there is a challenge to it, I have no evidence to back it up other than Mr. Charvia said.
Sure.
So I think we'll continue it to next month. You know, all the dimensions of the plot plan and everything.
Okay.
So, oh, you can come off the back by ten feet. If you go fifty, you got So open, you can come off the back by ten feet. If you go fifty, you got plenty. I have no idea. Look at it.
Okay. So, so to expand on what the chair is just trying to get across is that if we grant you relief, we have to give you an amount. You have to be asking and say, I want seven feet based on the survey plan or you want six feet. So that would be part of our decision would be if we were to grant it would be we are giving you a side yard setback of six feet or seven feet, whatever, whatever that number is, but it has to be verifiable. That it can't just be whimsical that we think that you're starting at ten feet, you're coming into it by three feet. So you directly have seven feet to spare and that would be your new side yard setback. We need something tangible that, to the chair's point, that should get appealed. We don't look like idiots by just blindly just giving you a side yard variance, okay?
Okay. And also, you need the three conditions for that. You know, faith, you know, create a safety hazard. The derogate from the intent to the ordinance of course of that, that's why you're here. And due to shape, topography and soil conditions, you can put a good chase together. Safety of the inhabitants, of the neighborhood, et cetera, but you should have those three conditions addressed.
I did, I put them on a cover letter. That, that I, that I did the same thing with this as the other application because I came in last month and got that feedback. So I, my three reasons for appeal was there's nowhere on the property we can put a secondary egress that meets the setback. That the less, left rear corner because of the grade and the topography is the least impactful spot to put the secondary egress. And that the secondary egress is required for safety of future inhabitants. And I did have dimensions in there, but I can see where it's not easily seen. So if it makes it an easier thing for you folks to look at, I can put a plot plan that shows all the setbacks, where I'm thinking of putting this stair and am I understanding correctly, Mr. Hanks and Mr. Lethon, that this could be an aerial view? If I draw the stair on the, on the, on the building. So, so you, you'll have a, a survey plan that's going to show the footprint of the building and the boundaries of the property. And then, and then they go, surveyor should be identifying the setbacks to all your lot lines. And then, yes, you would show that you're going to come off three feet. That's your minimum for a landing correct on the building code. So then you'd show the balance of what your side yard setback would be. So that would be the relief that you're asking for. But, but to be clear, do I have to hire a surveyor or can I draw it on a mortgage plan?
You gave you three answers. I'm gonna ask you questions on your end. First one, there's nowhere on the property where we can put a second egress that meets the setback. My first question was why? So you see, you've got to expand it and tell us, you made a statement, but why? That's like when we make a decision, if we deny somebody, we have to put why we deny them. It's not a no. And if we grant one, when we write the decision, we have to validate why we granted that decision. I can't come in with and say, there's nowhere on the property. Have to tell them why.
Shape topography.
Yep, shape topography, soil conditions. And some of that stuff doesn't matter because you can't do it. And it's probably not, it could be soil conditions. The topography of the land will tell you, I only can put it in this corner because the rest goes like this. And the third, the secondary egress is required for the safety of the inhabitants. And you just take, does this create or activate a safety hazard? That's the, that's the number three. You can say, no, this is not creating a safety hazard. Safety of the inhabitants, et cetera. Just expand it and validate your comment. That's what I'm asking. Another question.
No, no. Thank you. I'm just going to circle back if he did ask a question, does he need to have a survey? And I'm going to leave that to you, Mr. Chair, is what, what level of a plan are you going to accept?
If he has, Mr. Charia, do you finance this property?
Did I finance it? Well, do you have a mortgage plan? That's what you're getting.
No, I don't mortgage on it.
No.
Well, any, I've called certified plot plan would be great. You have accepted plot plans in the past that were hand drawn and that took a lot of work to get it done. You can have it certified quickly with a surveyor.
I found. Okay, yeah. It, thank you. And not to belabor the point, but I could very easily draw in a stair on that and the setbacks, or I could also go down to Alex's office and ask him to draw it in. If, in my opinion, and this is only my opinion, if you have something that shows a definite side yard setback, say it's ten feet, and then you say you're going to approach into it by three feet, I'd be, I would accept that. Okay. But I'm only one of five here. Does everybody else agree with that? As long, as long as it's a survey plan that identifies what he has for a side yard currently, and then he tells us how much he's coming into it by. Sounds. Okay, I'll get up the podium. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay, I need a motion to continue this.
Take a motion to continue till next month.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Oppose?
Are you all at a sign that you're extending? Right, can we all have paperwork for you?
Next case. Two oh two five dash oh three dash oh one special permit. Russell Burke, Burke, Eas road, plot parcel ID one one two seven dash one four, dash one oh one, comma, dash one one two seven, dash one four, dash one oh two, and H twenty-seven, dash fourteen, dash one oh three, environmentally restore all disturbed twenty acres. Sell it.
Good evening. Uh, I'm, I'm Russell Burke. I'm with the PSD group and here with me is Emily Merino, who is, um, uh, representing the, um, North County Land Trust, who's the owner of the property. And all the, one low tech, um, presentation style, that's all right. I mean, that's okay with the board, um.
Good to me. I don't want to have to throw my neck like that this time.
I know. I don't blame you.
Very familiar with that property. Very familiar.
Been lingering around from what I gather.
What?
It's been lingering around, um.
Well, I granted the original variance to construct that housing project. So when I saw this, I went, oh boy, comes back around.
Well, ho- hopefully this is, has a better ending than the, than the first one. Um.
I'm ready, huh?
Okay, um, how, how deep do you want me to dive on this? Uh. So I'll, I'll give you kind of an overview and then we can, if you want to get into the nitty gritty, we can do that as well. Hopefully I've covered all your points. Uh. Uh, we're seeking a, a special permit, um, and the zoning code has a, a special, special permit for this, um, which is the earth, earth moving, um, and earth removal section. And we are by virtue of the amount of, of proposed site work, um, meeting the, the threshold that requires a special permit for this property. Um, as some of you may or may not know, the, um, the proposed property, um, is a hundred fifty-seven, hundred fifty-seven acre site that was uh, previously approved for a hundred and seven watt subdivision, some ten plus years ago. The, uh, proponent, um, started moving ahead and, uh, put in some, some road stubs and, uh, did some, you know, initial utilities. Uh, but I think the, the major focus, um, seemed to be, this was a, an area that was rich in, uh, gravel, sandy gravel material that was, um, very vigorously, um, worked on, on, on the site. Uh, for whatever reason, uh, two or three years into the project, the, uh, development, uh, ran into difficulties and ultimately the construction lender took the property over. Um, and there it sat for ten, ten plus years. Um, the, uh, the bank tried to sell it and, uh, wasn't finding any takers. Um, ultimately the bank, uh, decided to, uh, work with the North County Land Trust, which Emily was here representing, um, who agreed to take over the, the property. Um, and the purpose for, for the property was to, uh, turn it back into a, a conservation open area. Um, now they have, um, Emily can get into some of the overall plans, um, that, that entails, but one of the first, uh, issues they had at Congress. The conditions on, on the site. If all of this material is in the package.
It's all the way up like so.
That represents about, uh, uh, twenty acres or, or about twelve percent of the site area that is in that condition. And so one of the first steps that the North County Land Trust wants to do is do some regrading of that, um, those stockpiles of, of, of gravel and spread them out over and, uh, create more of a, uh, a level level playing field is not exactly the right word, but to create a, a level area. Um, so in order to do this, in addition to the, uh, special permit that we're for this, uh, board, um, it also required uh, going before the conservation commission because the stockpiles and where the, uh, the spoils are to be spread, work is going to be occurring within the, um, hundred foot buffer to the resource areas, um, identified by the conservation commission. Um, we just received today, uh, the order of conditions from the conservation commission, um, which was being applied for on a parallel course with the special permit application. Um, so we're very pleased with that. That entailed, um, us looking, um, into the, uh, stormwater and the sedimentation erosion control. And many of those technical actors that the conservation commission, uh, took a, a, a real close look at and were pleased that they, they finally issued a, an order of conditions to allow the work to proceed from their, their jurisdictional point of view. The, uh, work entails the, the regrading of gravel, as I mentioned, um, from the stockpiles. The, um, work will occur totally onsite. There's no net export or import of material. So there's going to be no, other than the mobilization of equipment on the site and then taking it off the site and then the daily traffic from the, the workers going there. There's going to be no um, back and forth of heavy machinery, um, though during the, the work itself, there will be, um, equipment, you know, pushing, pushing the material around.
Topsoil off the site or?
There, there is no topsoil on, on the site whatsoever. The, the ultimate goal is to create a, a grass plained area. What they're looking to do is to, um, re, um, spread the material and then use the natural vegetation, get rid of the invasives that are there and to create a, a more environment. We won't call it an ecological restoration, but an environmental restoration of the property, um, to give it a chance to start regenerating with some natural as well as, uh, selected plantings to augment the, the natural vegetation to create more, more suitable habitat for the, um, uh, vegetation and the wildlife that occurs there. The, uh, let's see here. The, the, the existing soil is, is, has poor sandy nutrients. So this type of, um, uh, sand plain grassland, our environmental ecology people think this is the better way to, uh, treat this property rather than to try to, you know, bring in topsoil and, and put types of, um, plant materials there that doesn't want to go there.
And not planning to replicate it what it was before they started moving anything along.
Exactly, um, exactly.
I might have missed that. Are you going to do any planting, you know, plant tree materials? Sorry.
Um, yeah, so we are taking a wait and see if, oh, sorry, Emily Merino, I'm the director of land programs for North County Land Trust. Um, so we're initially only going to do plantings on the, um, the remaining slope where we're moving some of the material and that's just for erosion control. And there are some seed bank plants there. Uh, we're looking for little blue stem to establish across the site and we already have, um, some of that established there. So we're going to take a wait and see approach for, um, one to two years for major plantings. We're hoping to do some very small plantings of mostly little blue stem, um, potentially this year, once the site is graded, but no major plantings in the initial.
That there's work on a small level planting. You're, you have or going to identify the naturalized plants that will, in that area or still plant in that area and plant the same thing as the fourth project.
So we'll be planting little blue stem, which is already there. And then there are a few other key species of inland sand plain grasslands that we will be planting there, but mostly little blue stem to begin. It's a keystone pieces of that habitat.
Keystone. Okay.
So a- a- as I said, the, um, essentially what the, this is a, a, the first step, I think, from a, a much larger master plan that we have to improve this area. But I don't know if you've had the chance to, to walk out there. It's, um, quite overwhelming when you look at the size of these piles that have been left, left behind. Um, I, I think this, uh, is a good first step to try to, uh, re reclaim a, uh, uh, a, a busted subdivision, for lack of a better, better phrase.
They actually removed topsoil or did they just relocate it?
I suspect, I think it's removed, but when you walk the site and look at areas that have not been disturbed, there wasn't a lot of topsoil there to begin with. Um, that, that whole area, when you look at the soil maps, is sandy gravel in there. Looks to be some areas around there that have been used as gravel thorough pits over the years as well. Um, and it's quite possible that the site, you know, a hundred years ago, might have, um, had people grabbing gravel from the site. That's just my speculation, right?
Now, that's a, like I said, I'm familiar with, but I've walked with it a couple of times. I walked with it when it was probably close to the beginning. And then, uh, I've even notified that they were putting in utilities, you know, it's, it's what I call junking boxes and wires. And then the terrain, like sort of like. And you could see where the bulldozer had pushed all this gravel up and, and probably a twenty-five foot drop down. And it was all over and they said it was, that's, that's both because they were still focusing on selling lots and I both because they were still focusing on selling lots and everything, but then it was just left like that. And so I'm not sure if it's still in its native condition, but I'm going to assume so. But there's got to be some erosion happening.
There's a, there's a, a little bit, but because of the gra- gravelly nature of the, the soil, that the percolation is, is quite, uh, uh, good. Um, and so, you know, we have done a stormwater, uh, plan as part of the Conservation Commission and it met all the requirements, uh, from D and P in terms of runoff, et cetera. And also has a fairly extensive, um, uh, operation and maintenance in terms of sedimentation erosion control and then post facto monitoring to make sure everything is, is being done accordingly to be, uh, approved with the order of conditions.
Oh, I'm no special firm that we got, may not have, we, we, we have to address. In the packet here, you have addressed them.
Oh.
But the public has not seen it. So I'm going to ask if you can highlight it and go over it. You can read right from your report.
Sure. Have, have to. I, I even dog aired it in my, uh, my report. The, uh, the first one is the proposal shall, shall be suitably located in the neighborhood in which the proposed indoor entire city, um, and shall be compatible with the neighborhood character, existing uses and other uses permitted by right in the same district. Um, I think that's rather obvious that, uh, we're going to be reclaiming what was proposed for a hundred seven lot subdivision, uh, to reclaim it back into its net. As, as much as possible the natural state that it, it, um, was in previously to the subdivision. The second, uh, item is the proposal shall provide convenient and safe vehicular and pedestrian movement within the site and in relation to adjacent streets, properties and improvements. Um, there are two access points going into the site, um, which will be the, I guess, the trailheads, so to speak, of, of the property. Uh, the applicant, um, with re- respect to the proposed work before you, um, the vehicular movement is basically going to be the, uh, mobilization of the construction equipment, site equipment onto the site and then, uh, the daily commute of the, uh, construction workers, the, uh, excavators, et cetera. Um, so I don't think the vehicular access is going to be a, a factor as far as the approval, um, of the special permit. The proposal shall provide adequate space for off-street parking, loading and unloading of vehicle goods, products, materials, equipment, et cetera. I think we have enough room on the site to probably handle the stuff we're going to be doing. Uh, so I, I think we meet that requirement. Um, the proposal shall provide adequate and appropriate facilities and utilities for the proper operation of the proposed use and disposal of sewage, refuge and other waste products, methods of drainage of surface water. Um, in terms of disposal of sewage, I think we'll have some temporary need and, uh, portable, uh, sanitary facilities will be provided by the contractor. Um, with respect to, um, uh, methods of drainage and surface water, I think the, the stormwater report that was, uh, done, which is part of the Conservation Commission, uh, basically talks that the proposed work is not going to act, activate or make any worse, um, than existing conditions, uh, currently on the site. The proposal shall not constitute nuisance due to air and water pollution, erosion flood noise, odor, dust, vibration, lights, visually offensive structures or site features. In fact, we'll be removing some offensive site features, the, the aforementioned gravel stockpiles. Um, with respect to their will during the operations of the excavation that's going on, there will be, um, noise, um, uh, you know, fumes from the diesel engines, et cetera, but that will just be temporary, um, during that, that construction period. Um, and then other, once the work is completed, um, none of those issues will, uh, be perpetuated other than if they have spot work here, here and there. Um, number six, the proposal shall not be a substantial inconvenience or hazard to abutters, vehicles, pedestrians as, uh, determined by the special permit, permit granting firm. I hope you'll agree with us that we, we think that the proposed work, um, uh, will not, uh, constitute a substantial inconvenience or hazard to, to abutters. Um, we, we have had, um, the Conservation Commission, uh, abutters, um, appearing in support of this and I don't know if we have anybody with us this evening. Um, but, um, you have not, um, received any negative, uh, feedback. The proposal shall be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of this chapter. Um, we think the, um, uh, the environmental restoration of the busted subdivision is in keeping with the purpose and harmony and general purpose of, of the, uh, the code. The proposal shall not have a significant, uh, detrimental impact on city services, tax base, employment opportunities. Um, it, uh, well, I guess you could argue, uh, it may have a negative effect on the tax base because it's going to be, um, owned publicly, not generating, uh, folk who were in the way of tax, but will also, um, not be generating, um, any special services in terms of school aid, population, uh, city services, fire, um, et cetera. Uh, and lastly, the proposal is consistent with the city's community development plan or master plan. Uh, the, the city doesn't have a master plan. Actually, one is about to commence, uh, shortly, uh, but the, um, Key's conservation area is mentioned in the city's open space and recreation plan, which, uh, basically states the, uh, uh, the proposed restoration effort proposed by the North County Land Trust is consistent with the goal of, uh, uh, improving and upkeep of open space for, in the city's garden. Hope that addresses your, your, um, question, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, in your restoration work, how many days a week will you be working?
Um, that has not been finalized, I would assume, and that Emily, you're going to be the one that's been dealing with the contract. I would say at least five days a week.
Some even holidays. Okay, what are your hours of operation?
Uh, again, if you wish to put, uh, some time limits that's, you know, customary and, uh,
You're, I want to say close to residential areas. I mean, you're not right next to it, but still, you know, if you're using heavy equipment, you know, landowners, et cetera, they make a lot of noise. Yeah, bunch of diesel engines are backing up, there was a warning that's going off. Yeah, okay. Yeah, I would think if the board looks to grant this, uh, we would probably put a condition on it, like holidays and weekends off. You know, I'm going to say, and I'm going to throw a number out to you. You can say, well, this is marble, not all of it. You know, seven to five, seven to six. That was too easy. How about? I came too early. I'll move back. Nine to one. No, it's just trying to be reasonable and considering it might be a couple of thousand feet away, but still.
That, that's part of your, your responsibility and prerogative. So I, I, I think we're, okay, we're amenable to, to reasonable, uh, restrictions of that nature.
They've also already committed to making sure they, they keep traffic down during like commuting time and school time, um, which they hope will help as well.
And one thing, and I don't have it here, but I would ask that maybe you contact the school department to determine what the bus runs are, you know, because you've got to go into Keys Road. And I'm not sure how heavy or light the traffic is, but I would prefer not to have that heavy equipment going in and out when the buses are coming through and they'll tell you what their busy times are, you know, probably seven thirty in the morning, three or three thirty in the afternoon.
Yeah, I would, I would imagine mid, midday type of mobilization would be the, uh,
So I would ask, ask you to research that. And if we do grant that, uh, you could get that. And if you're going to change your hours, we do something, we do about the bus traffic, submit it to us and when you'll either tame it down or it will stop for an hour or something like that. I'll go and put that on your table.
Right. And it'd really be, you know, uh, I, I would imagine fairly limited. First, the, the mobilization, putting all the equipment in there and then upon finish, taking it out. So I, I don't think that's going to be a heavy lift on, on.
What hours are you, uh, committing to? Seven to five, seven to four, eight, what number?
I, I think seven, seven to five, um, would be.
Or numbers. Have any questions or comments to the applicant? Mr. Hanks.
Uh, I applaud your efforts. I think it's a great project. Um, I agree with my partners here that, um, just when you're mobilizing, just make sure that you're walking around a school bus schedule. Depends on, you know, like you said, once, once your equipment's there, I don't see it coming and going, you know.
No, just the, uh, the day labor is coming, coming and going.
Good thing is you're not extracting any materials. That's where your traffic really comes up.
When I saw that, I said, oh boy, that makes this a whole lot easier yourself.
Oh, any questions? Mr. Hanks. Okay. Any representatives of the city speak regarding this application?
I, yeah, yeah, I'll listen to that. I, that's, uh, the bus surgery, you have to, to come by, you get to contact the military officers. I believe bus pickup in seven oh five, there's a bus stop there. Uh, West Street and, and Key's Road, the bus stop there, I think, seven oh five. Uh, I would just add that, uh, I think it's a good project. Uh, I think it's in line with the city's, with the city's vision. Uh, it's extremely difficult to grow a city and move a city forward while offering, um, businesses and amenities, schools and, uh, you know, we, we only have one or two other recreational areas. So being able to, I'm going to date everybody in the term just about, uh, most of us remember when this was simplex field, right? So baseball fields, sublets, time recorder, had their outings there. So at one point in time, this was recreational use. Uh, so it's going to be nice to, to have it converted back to that.
I heard, heard back in the day, there was also some extracurricular use there too.
Oh. I'm going to put an asterisk to it if I was going to travel because most of your equipment or probably holidays are going to be on site. It'll really be beginning, coming in and coming out. So, you know, I mean, it's actually, you know, between seven and watch the school traffic, but it was really just workers, you know, four, five, six guys to run the equipment. Couple of cars isn't going to matter, but if you're going to be moving heavy equipment, just please do that.
No, that, that's perfectly reasonable and I think it, uh, something that we, we, we'd do irrespective of, uh, um.
Oh, are you comfortable with the decision? Okay, do I hear a motion to grant the special permit after?
We have some arms up.
I'm sorry. Well, any abutters who would like to speak in favor of this application? Any interested parties who would like to speak in favor of this application?
Paul DeMayo, Nine Willis Road. Um, I probably know this property better than just about anybody else in this room. Um, it's been part, this property's been part of my life over fifty years. Um, I was also a, a director with North County Land Trust. I watched the, um, desecration of this property through the development. I, I, I know, um, every, every, uh, single acre of this property and what, um, North County Land Trust proposes here is great. Now, since that, um, development was discontinued, um, there really hasn't been that much change in the property because the detention basins, um, the drainage systems were al- already put in, so there really hasn't been, um, much erosion at all. Um, there was, um, excavation of the loom, uh, from all the roadways, um, it was and is still stockpiled, but that's not part of the equation here. What's part of the equation here is the leveling out of, um, the gravel piles which, um, amounts and, um, for them to bring in the, um, equipment, um, it's really not going to have any impact, um, on the neighborhood because of the setbacks from, uh, Princeton Street and, uh, Keys Road. On the other side of the railroad track, you have the junkyard. On another part, you have a bigger butter, Alan Russo, who owns seventy-five acres. And, um, Alan, who is my brother-in-law, is fully in support of us bringing the restoration back to the simplex property. Um, I, I, like I said, I fully support this, um, this property, uh, dates back in time, back to the late seventeen hundreds. Um, it still has a hollow on it that, uh, dates back to Ebene, Ebenezer Keyes, when, uh, he lived on the property. Um, so, um, without any further delay, the Conservation Commission has gone ahead, issued an order of conditions of approval. Without any further delay, I would hope that the, uh, ZBA, uh, would get behind this project, get behind North County Land Trust and approve this tonight. Thank you.
Mayo, thank you for the history lots of food. Is there anyone, is there any other interested parties who would like to speak in favor of? Is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to this application? Anyone to speak in opposition to this application? No opposition? Okay. Now I'll call for the motion. One condition about they get their school bus, you know, schedule and, okay.
The hours, yeah, it's too crazy. Is there, are there any other conditions besides the school bus?
Hours. Days, hours of school bus, conditions. You know.
For the hours of operation, between seven to five, Monday to Friday.
And.
No holiday.
No holidays.
So all of the, uh, they. Do we want to have, um, the ability for a special circumstance where for some reason they have to get something done and they have to go into power and do that, they apply the building commitment?
That's fine. That's pretty much standard. If there's an issue that comes up.
Okay, with that, Tom?
But provision to have, things happen.
They, they, they could be in some ways where, where it is really pushable, finish up a certain aspect and they might need to have to maybe go to six o'clock, but if, if they notify him in advance, that way it, um, if the phone starts ringing, he's like, yeah, we're well aware of that and that we got it by six, six thirty.
That's my issue. I think, I hear a second, second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, no opposition. Special permit granted. Good luck and thank you.
Thank, thank you for your consideration and, um, advice. Thank you.
Thank, thank you for your consideration and, um, and advice. Thank you.
I'll, I'll just let Carol.
I don't think we need the full size. We just need. Can I keep the easel? God.
Okay, the next case before the board. Case two oh two five dash oh three. I'm sorry, that's the board. Case two oh two five dash oh two oh one. Christina McCardle, eight seven seven Tiffany Golden, parcel ID. M oh seven dash fifteen dash four, retail own operation. And now just for the one, this is an administrative appeal.
All right, um, do I just dive right in? Okay, all right, so I am appealing these zoning determinations that I received on January eighth. Um, because from the time I initially contacted Board of Health on October twenty-ninth, up until January ninth, I was never informed that the first step. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. My name's Christina McCardle. I am at eight seven seven Tupper B Boulevard in Gardner. Um. I was never informed that the first step in the process should have been to contact the building department. Uh, due to this lack of communication has resulted in significant confusion and causing me to unknowingly proceed in the wrong order of the process. Um, I am a permitted cottage baker and I'm trying to obtain approval to have a farm stand on my property to sell baked goods to Gardner residents. Um. Within, um, the packet, there's an email that read from November fifth, uh, at ten forty-seven, titled water testing from Board of Health inspector stating that please make sure to acquire a form of intent from the building department as well. This is a requirement to start a business. I responded asking, do I submit the form of intent before or after getting the water tested? I have to get my water tested because I have a private well. I don't have city well, water. Um, which was obviously not a problem in obtained. Um, water tested and submitting my application and necessary documents to you. The inspector replied saying the sample should be submitted within the application. If contacting the building department was such a crucial step within this process of getting permitted, then why was I given the wrong information? That answer should have been, I should have contacted the building department right away or the very first step rather than when I would submit all of my documentation to the Board of Health, when I was ready for inspection, for approval and all of that. When I received those zoning determination, it states that your proposed business would cause an outward manifestation of a business being conducted on the premises that would not be permitted. If me putting a farm stand on my property would cause an outward manifestation, why are there multiple farm stands in Gardner operating with no issues? There's one on Willis Road, there's one on Whitney Road, which is very close, probably a little bit more than three hundred feet of Butter's notice, but it's very close. Um, and they're operating with no issues. I don't know if they're operating within the guidelines or the parameters of codes, but they are operating nonetheless. Um, in response, I reached out to my neighbors to gauge their opinions about having a farm stand in our community, which you'll see in the packets I have attached, signed letters from all of the abutters on Tiffany Boulevard, which is beautiful. Five neighbors, all of them have signed and are okay with putting a farm stand on the property, um, and are in support of this. Attached also within the packet is other Gardner residents signing that letter in support as well as other individuals that are from surrounding towns. Those supporters are also from towns that already have successful farm stands, which I find that intriguing that they're supporting this even though they have their own farm stands in their own towns. To further demonstrate the strong community backing this project, I launched a business Facebook page for my bakery, which has already garnered over fifty thousand views and nearly six hundred followers. For a business allegedly causing a negative outward manifestation, this level of support speaks volumes, don't you think? Uh, the zoning determination also states my proposed business would violate code six seven five dash eight three zero, home occupations. There shall be no public display or onsite retail sales of goods or wares. If selling from one's property violates code six seven five dash eight three zero, then why are other licensed cottage bakers selling from their properties without issue as of right now? And there's not just one, there's multiple of them. Are they also violating this code? Did they receive permits despite this violation? Why am I being denied for the same reasons for them operating with no issues? After speaking with the Board of Health of one nine, I learned that current cottage licensed bakers are operating and selling from their properties without any issues. I reached out to two licensed cottage bakers, one on Elm Street and the other one on Leo Drive. Both assured me they followed all the required steps and did not break any rules. However, if they do have, not have a special permit, they may in fact be, may be in violation, not through any fault of their own, but because there seems to be a lack of clear communication between two different departments, Board of Health and the building department. It seems to me that there's one hand not talking to the other for some reason. Um, and that's, has happened from the beginning of this whole process up until now. Um, for example, on Monday, January thirteenth, Mike of the Health Department Director, he called, uh, because he was made aware of there's supposed some confusion in regards to, uh, what is or isn't allowed under cottage food law. During the conversation, Mike confirmed I am permitted to conduct deliveries and pickups, um, on my property. And to clarify, I wanted to make sure we were on the same page in regards to pickup. Whether that was someone placed an order for baked good and they came and they paid for that item in person and picked it up, or if they placed an order paid online and then picked up their order. However, it was done, nonetheless, it was a pickup and the transaction was done on the property or in some way, shape or form, if that was okay. And Mike confirmed that yes, both scenarios are completely acceptable. I then expressed my confusion, explained that I'd been denied by the building commissioner due to sales in the property violating, violating code six seven five dash eight three zero. Mike stated that he would contact the building department to seek clarification or work to resolve the issue right away. I've also been in contact with City Council George Tyros. He reached out to me and also January thirtieth, and he has been in discussions with the building department and the Board of Health, um, to try to help get reservations to issue because there's clearly not a transparent rule in place for all cottage bakers in Gardner. Appealing this decision is my last resort. I have nothing left to lose. Over the past several months, I've invested countless hours of work, thousands of dollars, which I've also attached an itemized investment list of the investments that I've put into creating the bakery within my home, um, to show you everything that I bought, purchased, input and installed. While doing this to prepare for inspection, opening my cottage bakery. I was inspected on January sixteenth and approved by the Board of Health, so I'm fully permitted to sell and bake cottage, uh, baked goods out of my home. Ironically, when I got my permit, I did notice that there was a verbiage on there, which I wasn't able to attach to the packet at the time, but I do have a copy of it if you'd like. Um, and it says type of business and any restrictions, and it says retail sales are not permitted without approval from the ZBA. Permit is for preparation only of non-time temperature controlled for safety baked goods, like items that have to be at a certain temperature, like cream cheese, milk, dairy products, some stuff like that. Um, baked goods, jams, jellies and other non-time temperature controlled safety food produced at a cottage food operation. I found that intriguing that my permit states that verbiage, so I reached out to the two cottage bakers I mentioned before, Leo Drive and Elm Street. And ironically, both their permits do not say this verbiage. So I'm not sure if this is the new policy that the Board of Health and Building Department have come up together. And now it's in effect, starting with my permit going forward. Um, so I'm not sure if the current cottage bakers should be getting a new permit because they're currently being, they're operating under their old or current permits that don't say this. So they're selling from their homes, they're baking from their homes, they're doing everything that I can't do, even though I am permitted to do it from one department, just not the other. Um, so I do find that really intriguing. Um. Mr. Chairman, you've said with a saw off case that you want, uh, can, everything to be the same. If you let one person do it, then it's just a domino effect that it's going to allow other people to go, oh, mine's just six inches bigger, mine's eight inches bigger. Why is it okay that all these other bakers in the city of Gardner are operating, which is great? But I can't do the same because I want to have a farm stand that transactions are happening.
That here is, you're bringing these others. We did not have any of those others come before us. If they're operating, we have no idea. Nobody told us. And that's generally not under our jurisdiction by the way. You're here for an administrative appeal.
Correct.
For appealing Mr. Zupa's decision where he said, no. Uh, what happened with the Board of Health, et cetera? I can't stand up to that. I was not, the board was not part of that, that decision process or anything. All we do, Mr. Zupa and the board, we go to the zoning ordinance and we read it. And that tells us yes or no. And I don't want to have you go through a whole thing of all these people because that's really not part of all of this. And I've got a quote and I think Mr. Zupa did it. And we're looking at it, we under six seventy-five, eight thirty home occupation. We've had a number of home occupations over the years, but not a baking one. And pretty much the product was produced in under fifteen percent of its floor space. And everything that they produce was either shipped out, mailed out. There was no retail activity of people coming in, picking up, buying. It was all done right through the house or they delivered it to the post office and it was delivered. So I'm just going to read part of eight thirty for you and see where the board is focusing on. Six seventy-five, eight thirty, home occupation. It says, uh, a home occupation is defined herein, may be established in all residential districts and commercial one. Uh, no more than one person other than the resident of the premises shall be engaged in the conduct of the property. No offensive noise, vibrations, dust being pulled into the tunnel. There shall be no public display onsite retail sale of goods or wares. There shall be no signs except grounds permitted in your, in the ordinance. Such use shall be clearly secondary to the use of the premises, which yours would be. So, so there's no retail sale on, on, on the property, property and display of retail goods. In the package we got, you've got this little display, shanty or shack. That's where your product would be for sale. That's a retail sale and that's a public display, not allowed in the ordinance. You know, and it's not upset, excuse me, up the subject to discover. It's, it's clear that the answer is no.
Okay.
Now, if you would let down the path by the Board of Health, I can't answer to that. I don't know what they did. They didn't submit anything to us. And I mean, really the first course of actions, Mr. Zupa. And we read, I mean, eight thirty and two oh, two oh three talks about home occupation. And then not allowed with a retail sale or public display of goods or public coming in to pick it up.
Okay.
Unallowed.
Sure. Um, is the problem of it being like a permanent structure, if it was something temporary that was on wheels? I'm sorry. If, is it because it would be like a, um, a permanent structure, if it was something temporary that was on wheels that could be moved, is that, is it's too big and would it need to be smaller? Is it just across the board?
It's just no.
Okay.
Not have a public display, I don't care if it's ten feet or a hundred feet or like a, your little, uh, display.
Okay.
Uh, car shack, I don't know which one you call it, but that's not allowed.
Okay. So is it?
Now, if you produce the product in your house, you add it in a package and you grow it to your customers, no problem.
Okay.
But to have the customers coming in, stopping, picking it up, going to that little display booth, not allowed.
Okay. Um, so the city of Gardner, we do have a farmer's market, which is great, wonderful. Do you know how many days that market's open?
That, that farmer's market is not under what, a home occupation or what you want to do.
No, but it does coincide with me selling my product and having it accessible to customers. So that market's only open four days a year.
I, I, are you asking if you can sell at the farmer's market or are you saying that just?
It's just a reference of Gardner residents should have access to baked goods. They shouldn't have to rely on a big box store or, or go across town lines to Templeton, Winchester and Westminster that all have farm stands that are thriving and doing well because that's what residents want.
We're not looking at a farmer's market here.
No.
Looking at a home occupation. That is, it's not, it's not a, it's not a right to farm community.
Uh, but what, what, what you've got to keep in mind though is, uh, a, a farm stand would be, you're, you're selling an agricultural product. So if you were growing the wheat and then making product out of it, then you could theoretically possibly, you have to confer with the commissioner, that that would probably qualify for a farm stand, but you, you're, you're, you're buying all your product. Right, but you know, you're buying your wheat here and your eggs and everything else. So it's, it's, it's not that you are, um, to qualify for a farm stand, you have to be an, an agricultural use. All of that.
Selling farm fresh eggs, would that fall under that category?
Uh, well, you.
Cause I am zoned as rural resident, so I can have chickens, but I guess I just don't, can't have a spot to sell them.
Well, I think it's, it's pretty clear on the eight forty.
Sure.
Not allowed. We can't start comparing it against farmer's market and everything else. That's not the reg, rule of the regulation is written. Your appeal is to say his interpretation is incorrect. That's what you're looking for and that's what this board is going to render its decision on. Now, if we vote for it, it's a go, you'd have to work with him. If we deny it, there are other options you can look at. Like I said, you can drive the product, everybody and all your customers, not a problem. You can bake all you want, as long as it's less than fifty percent of your.
Which it is. Um, I also have a letter that the mayor, uh, filled out and sent over. You have that? Okay.
I'm gonna read it.
I want to make sure you have that. Um. Yeah, I mean, I've also attached, uh, pictures of my property where there would be parking, an area where it would be. That's all.
So, so you did an excellent job with your application, so we're not denying that. You, you did a phenomenal job with your application.
Got that.
But what, what, uh, just to reiterate where the chair's coming from is that you're, you're here for an appeal of the building commissioner's determinations, only enforcement's determination, whether or not, you're, you're, what you have to do is, is show us that he is incorrect with his determination. And it's, it's quite clear that there's, there's no retail sales at, at that location. You have the ability through Board of Health and through, um, the home occupation to, to run a business and as the chair says, as long as people aren't coming there to pick up your products. So if you can, you know, maybe have a runner that, you, you have so many orders in a day and that person just cuts them all over and makes all the deliveries. I love what you're doing. I, I don't, I, I don't fault you at all. Um, you, you're trying very hard. I commend you for that. Our role here unfortunately is, is the building commissioner correcting his interpret, interpretation of our ordinances, which I believe he is, you know, it's, it's right there. You know, it does say no retail sales at that establishment. Um. Yeah, it's, it's, again, your application is phenomenal. You, you've got to put a lot of effort into it. Your whole business philosophy is phenomenal. You're right. Uh, there, there probably is a big demand for what you're trying to do. Uh, hands are tied.
And I think it's clear that you want to run a retail operation. Other than just a home occupation, because you'd like to set up a self-service roadside stand so customers can pick up, you know, orders.
Right, if they want to place an order. Yeah, if they wanted to place an order or if they just wanted to come.
But that's, that's a retail operation. That's not a home occupation.
Though it's based out of my home.
Home could be a byproduct if it's in the right place and in the right time and it's, sorry, but Gardner unfortunately, it's not a right to farm community. You can't do that. So we have to vote on, as I said, whether we support Mr. Zupa's decision or we say no, we think your determination was wrong. or we say no, we think your determination was wrong.
Sure.
That's how, that's how we have to move.
Sure.
I'm going to read the mayor's letter before we vote. It's addressed to ring the phone chair and zoning board of appeal members. Garden City Hall, annex one fifty five Pleasant Street, Gardner. Regarding letter of support, case two oh two five oh two oh one Christina McCardle, eight seventy seven Tiffany Boulevard, Castle I D. M O seven fifteen dash four, retail from home operation. Here, Mr. Chairman, and members of the zoning board of appeal. About him writing this letter and supported the application for administrative appeal from Ms. Christina McCardle from the operation in retail business at her residence on eight seventy seven Tiffany, Tiffany Boulevard. Garden has made significant strides in growing our economy by boosting our business community in recent years. If we had to move forward as a city, we must do everything we can to promote business growth, cut back on red state that can stunt business development and work with those looking to open businesses here to get them set up for success. The business world today is quite different from what it looked like before. Even ten to fifteen years ago, many people associated businesses, particularly bakeries with storefronts, shopping centers in larger commercial areas. However, just as regular office workers transition to a more home-based model in many areas, also have businesses like Cottage and for your cottage bakery. I am supporting on the efforts of Ms. Ms. McCardle in looking to open her bakery business in, on her or at her property. Many people have been asking for bakery, bakery business in the city for years. And this helps fill the gap in industry for this type of square of city. Additionally, other locations in the city have recently been approved and opened for similar businesses as was recently seen with Laurel and Company on Elm Street. Thank you for your attention to this matter. Please feel free to contact my office anytime if you have any questions. Respectfully submitted, Michael J. Nicholson, Mayor of City of Gardner. And I'm just going to reference Laurel and Company never came before this board.
That's just the point of what I was trying to make is that it's, uh, frustrating that there's other cottage bakers that are permitted, yes, through the board of health. Um, but I don't think they're appropriately permitted through you commissioner, uh, to be selling from their property, but yet I'm trying to go through all the dot my i's, cross my t's, and I'm getting denied. It's, it's.
Well, I'll say on Laurel and Company, if needed, they would have to go before the building commissioner. He makes the decision. He interprets the zoning law. And either they, they meet the requirements of the zoning law or they don't. If they didn't, they would bend before this board. If they do, we never see it.
Okay.
So we're only when there's a violation of the zoning law.
Right.
So that's what it is. So board members have any other questions?
I think the only comment I'd make, there are other alternatives if you want to pursue this, and it's called variance.
I.
I think the, the approach that you take in is, I think the subject matter is clear resulting on our deviation out there are other alternatives.
And the way to go about that is for variance.
That's, that's one way. I mean, that, I'm not here to advise you.
No, just wanted to make sure I was crystal clear. Thank you.
There are alternatives to and I'm not going to ask to take, in order to get that considered.
Sure.
And I'm not going to ask if there's any Butters that support this, anybody doesn't support it. Because that's not what's here for variance or a special permit. You're asking for an administrative appeal. All we will do is vote on this, this decision.
Sure. I was also told by the office that that's what I was filing for. I, I wasn't aware of what was the right thing to file for, whether it was an administrative appeal, variance, a special permit. That's just what I was told.
Uh, and after I've decision, if we vote in favor, well, let's say we vote in opposition to his interpretation, then okay, if we vote for it, then you have the option. It's Mr. Court has to look at other options. Uh, and I'll say this is, and I don't always say this all the time, but you might want to consider hiring counsel to have them look at it.
Okay.
Going through the ordinance and see if there's any options or whatever, but the ordinance is very clear. Uh, but then no retail sales, you know, no standalone product display, display, et cetera. It's very clear and that's what it is. No, may, might be right. Maybe the ordinance is stale. But that's what we have to work with and the ordinance has to be changed.
Sure.
Up to the city council and the planning board to look at that.
Sure.
Uh, any questions or comments from board members at this stage? That's all right. Well. Okay. So I'm going to call for a motion to, I'll have to phrase this correctly here. Uh, if the board agrees, the motion is the board agrees with the building commissioner's decision. That would be a yea. If the board does not agree with his decision, then it'd be a nay. So I have a motion and it's to agree with the building commissioner's decision. One more, a second. A vote in favor of supporting the building commissioner's decision. Uh, correct, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Vote of, not supporting the building commissioner, say nay. No nays, building commissioner's decisions are held.
Thank.
Hey, thank you. The last case for lay of those material, yeah, this is worse.
This is mine. Somehow, I'm not sure. Where that came from.
I have some minutes of heat approval.
Change some.
Okay, I have minutes. This goes back Victor eighty-nine, Victor Hill Road. All. Laurie. Of course, Dave's not here. If you pass that to Laurie, you have her sign. Thank you. Oh, thank you. There are. Oh, minutes for, um, I'm sorry, November meeting. Well, thanks. You get the option to, uh, sign this one. Laurie also. Anyone? Yep.
Hold on. Hmm, 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 hmm. Who's going to not give me the be someone to come.
Know this. At my group.
Well, I do.
Everybody, I got another, I got more. I have more. You have more? First of all, though, I have a motion to accept the minutes. Right. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed, no opposition. Go guys, you and Laurie. Be used to it by now now. Yep, and now these are September thirty minutes. You and Laurie on that one. Yeah. Four, eleven, two, three, two. Should we? All signed back after we just talked.
I don't know, it's emotionally.
No, I don't.
I think he's cool.
Oh, really? Well. Apparently, there was no car around, it's a canyon. And it was from the mayor. That's, he had two, I had one after. October. October. Okay, we'll hold this one until we see the mayor next time. I was drained these days. Full-time grandmother now.
Fortunately, we're.
Mariola?
Yeah. You know, you.
I'm on a journey.
Not too bored for not getting one of those kids.
And I have some. Oh, really?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, he's played, he's been, he dates a lot of, he's finally found, uh, looking, looking good. Like, I used to find the flavor.
How old was he?
Twenty, forty.
Oh. Doesn't sound like bad life.
Yes, uh, he's done.
Okay, right. Okay, thank you.
So, hey, each day.
That's right. That's right. Good. What you're, uh, to adjourn? One more, nobody wants to go, make a motion to adjourn. Second, third, fourth, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed. Needing adjourn.